Please take your seats.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 17th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Harpetian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item will be the flag salute led by Councilmember Najarian, followed by the invocation, which will be delivered by Chaplain Michael Kingdom from Center Valley Filipino Church. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Let us pray. Almighty, all-powerful, and benevolent Creator, we come before you this evening with gratitude in our hearts for this great city of Glendale, gratitude for the citizens who live here, and for those who choose to serve this city and make it a better place to live. Tonight, we pray a blessing upon the city council members and city officials, a blessing that your wisdom and divine understanding be placed upon them as they discuss matters and issues that will impact and affect the lives of thousands. We also pray for the diverse population of this great community. We pray for peace and safety, the spirit of cooperation and tolerance, and that the citizens and leadership together will be able to forge a way towards a better tomorrow. To these ends, we pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the April 17, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Friday, April 13, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is the agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, April 24, 2018, and I will make an announcement at this time that all of the meetings for both the Housing Authority and the City Council are canceled on April 24 in observance for the Armenian Holocaust.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Manager, you have an announcement?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, before we continue with the rest of the agenda under presentations, I'd like to make an announcement regarding the agenda this evening. We had an item under 9A hearings. This was Director of Community Development. This was regarding the Hotel Indigo item. That was continued from April 3 of 2018. This afternoon, we received word right before 1 o'clock from our three real estate developers, from one of their managing members, that they have withdrawn their application to build the Indigo brand hotel at the designated site. So I wanted to make that announcement in case there are folks... (applause) In case there are folks who are here this evening who wanted to hear that item. So I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council again, that item 9A, again, regarding Indigo, the developer has withdrawn his application.
Thank you, Madam Manager. So anyone who's here on that item, there's, I guess, no need for you to be here. You can...
You're welcome to stay if they...
You're welcome to stay, of course you are, but unless you really enjoy lone council meetings, you may want to leave. But I, you know, I just want to say that you were clapping and, you know, I just want to point out the fact that there will be no jobs. That hotel is gone.
No jobs.
Okay. But in any case, thank you very much. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to. If you'd like to leave, we'll take a couple of seconds, wait for you to leave, and then we'll go on with the regular agenda. And you want to stay? Okay, next item, please.
He is a proclamation designating April as DMV Donate Life California Month.
Thank you. And who will be receiving this proclamation?
Hello.
Hello.
Mr. Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you for being here. If you'd give me a second, I'll read the proclamation.
Sure. Okay.
And, you know, Alex Parahon's not here.
No, that's why...
He's a big champion of Donate Life.
Yes, he is.
And I'm sure, you know, you're here and you're going to represent...
I'm in his place, yeah. And I'm new. I'm new, a new ambassador.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation.
Okay.
Which states, whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than 114,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 20 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs, and whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and whereas more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California, and at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors, and a single individual donation of the heart, lung, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need, and whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age and medical condition, and whereas over 14 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored, and whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles, and therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim that in recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2018, is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Glendale, and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org,
Thank you for reading that. Appreciate that. It was very nice to read.
But I think it's a kind of a more of an informational instructional piece of material.
Yeah. There was a lot of information.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any comments?
Anyways, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Susie Gonzalez, and I truly appreciate the support of the City of Glendale for April's DMV Donate Life California Month. As a three-time kidney recipient, after being on dialysis for 21 years, I'm very honored and thankful to be here today to represent One Legacy and Donate Life. The trans...I'm very grateful to have received these transplants, which have extended my life, allowing me to raise my son as a single mother. I also offer hope and inspire others with kidney disease. Each of us here today can make a difference by joining the over 14 million Californians who have checked yes at the DMV online or donatelifecalifornia.org. Lastly, I would like to invite the mayor, Mr. Mayor, and the city council members and the audience to join me at the 16th Annual Donate Life Run Walk on April 28. It's a Saturday, and if you're interested, if anybody's interested in the audience or the Mr. Mayor or the council members, please let me know, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and regarding the importance of donation and transplantation.
Thank you. And when will the walk take place?
It's on April...
Oh, sorry, where will it be?
Cal State Fullerton. Uh-huh. It's, sorry, 8 o'clock is registration, about 9 o'clock is opening ceremonies, and they have, it's a huge event, family event, family festival event. Thousands of people come, and it's a big event.
Okay, very nice.
Thank you.
Do I have my colleagues? Would anyone like to make comments?
Would anybody like to come?
We'll see.
We would like to come if our schedule is...
On April 28.
Okay.
And if anybody wants to come, they're going to want your information, contact your name and your contact information, because I don't know if you know who Gavin is, Gavin Sweeney? You could, are you, do you have contact with Alex?
Of course.
Okay. Let Alex know.
Very well.
Because they'll, I'm not sure what they'll do. They're going to do something for you, though.
We will.
Okay.
And I'll just say that I, you know, I've been a donor, registered donor, since 2003, and I, every year, you know, we do this, and I encourage everyone to become a donor because...
Thank you.
There's only an upshot.
And because of people who say yes at the DMV, I'm still alive.
There you go. So you are actually...
Yes, exactly. Uh-huh.
Very nice.
And so that's why I'm an ambassador.
And right before...
Trying to help other people save lives and heal lives.
Right before Christmas, I believe it was, we had the...
You signed up?
No, no, I signed up 15 years ago, 20 years ago, but we had the event at one of the hangars by Rose Bowl, where they were assembling the Donate Life float.
Mm-hmm.
And it was fantastic, because the individuals who donated their organs and tissue were being honored, in essence, at that event.
Yeah.
And were being featured on the float, and the individuals who benefited from it, from the, from their donations, were present, testifying as to the importance and the value of such donations. So congratulations on championing this.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm so glad that you've benefited from someone's goodwill and willingness to donate their organs. I'm going to have my colleagues...
Very grateful to be here, yeah. They did request that if I could have...
Autograph?
Yeah.
Let's...
Uh-huh. Is that possible?
Of course. We should all, council should all come down and we should take it down. Down. You take it.
I don't know if, um, you know, we do this sometimes, or... Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, there you go. Just, uh... I have trouble walking because I have a kind of a kitty. All right. There you go. Okay. This, here... Oh, let me hide this thing.
Hold over there. Here.
Okay. Should we go? Okay. Thank you.
Can you take over there?
Yeah. Oh, okay.
We're good.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It's very nice to meet you. Come on. Thank you. See me around somewhere. Yeah, but I don't live here. Oh, I live. Do you know Lori Hartwell? Oh, well, that's why.
Let's take one.
Yeah, well, I run her support group. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's right. Yeah. You go to her and... Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have proclamation designating April 8 through 14, 2018, as National Library Week. And who will be receiving this proclamation?
Anahid.
Anahid or Shaka?
Anahid or Shaka.
Or our Shaka, or both of you. Both of you, of course. Okay. So I'm going to read this proclamation to the record, too.
It's short, it's good, yeah.
It's much shorter.
Yeah.
But that's how the clerk likes it, so, here we go. Whereas the library, arts, and culture department will join libraries around the United States to celebrate National Library Week, April 8 through 14, 2018, and whereas Reflect Space is a new exhibit space at the downtown Central Library designed to explore and reflect on the Armenian genocide and other major human atrocities and civil rights violations, and whereas Reflect Space is a hybrid space that is both experimental and informative, employing art, technology, and interactive media to reflect on the past and present of Glendale's communal fabric, as well as current-day global human rights issues, and whereas emphasis at Reflect Space is placed on the witness narrative, those who saw, wrote, or spoke about, or have been affected by genocide or human rights calamities, and therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of City of Glendale, proclaim April 8 through 14, 2018, as National Library Week in Glendale, California, and invite Glendale residents to visit the Reflect Space Gallery at downtown Central Library. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's an honor for us to be receiving this proclamation, and if I could say a couple of things about our space, we've been around now for a year, it'll be a year, like, very shortly, and we've come around again. We did it, we started with Armenian genocide exhibition. We have an Armenian genocide-related exhibition right now. It's called Nonlinear Histories, and I invite you and the public to come see it. We have two artists. So our approach has been to bring not only artists, international artists and local artists, but also engaging in archives and different kind of historical documents to exhibit in our space. We have two artists right now who have exhibited at the Venice Biennale, that is, at the highest levels of the art world, and we have also public art going on in the space. So it's not only in the gallery space, but also in the library itself and outside. Our next exhibit, and we've actually received two grants. One is for a Japanese internment exhibition, which we're going to do next. We're looking forward to that. We're going to be also doing public art part of the exhibition, and we're actually making a documentary as part of this exhibition, where we are going to document a Glendale family who were actually interned in Poston, Arizona. We're going to follow them and make a documentary and show it in our space. We also have a grant that we received for oral history from the California Council on Humanities, and that's going to happen sometime next year. So we invite the public, we invite the city council to visit us at any time.
Exciting art things are happening in and around Glendale, specifically at the library, so please come see, explore, and pass on the great things that are going on at the library. It's not just the library anymore. It's beyond. It's maker space. We have a recording studio. We have the gallery, Reflect Space. Different things and activities and lectures take place at the library. So it's a really exciting, new place, newly renovated, state-of-the-art. If you come in, you won't want to leave.
Yes, indeed. I, you know, I enjoyed the Dildilian photo collection exhibition, sort of very bittersweet. What an amazing exhibit. I didn't know that such a thing exists, where one individual had basically documented his and his family's pre and post-genocide life in western Armenia, and then, I think, Greece, I think they ended up in Greece.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that he was able to bring out hundreds of negative prints...
The fact that they survived, yeah.
Not only this family survived, but all that work survived, and we're very fortunate that Aran Mar Soubian has sort of taken up and is exhibiting it, and very fortunate that it's here. Yeah, it's a tremendous...
Very unique.
Unique.
Very unique.
Collection, yeah. So we're fortunate to have that also. Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Devine.
I just want to commend you for your passion, for the, for every exhibit that you, that you put into the space. It's so obvious that you love what you're doing, and the community really should get down to the library and see some of the exhibits that you are producing. They're fantastic. I know Cindy Cleary is here in the, in the audience, and she is the director of our library, so we should give a shout out to her as well. But thank you to Aran Anahid, wonderful job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you. And now, I am going to ask, although I want to present you with a proclamation. Okay, and next, we have a proclamation designating the week of April 24, 2018, as Week of Remembrance. And who will receive the proclamation? Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to read this proclamation to the record. And we'll then turn to remarks from the committee. Proclamation, whereas the City of Glendale believes that the cultural diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based on the unique strengths of each of its community members. Today, we can no longer innocently harbor feelings, feelings of superiority and separatism in our society, and whereas many in our community who are of Armenian descent lost a significant number of family members, belongings, and heritage in the Armenian genocide. The hurt is deep, and we look forward to a time when the tragedy will be universally acknowledged, and whereas we appreciate the efforts of the community volunteers in organizing the Week of Remembrance to commemorate and recognize April 24 as Armenian Genocide Day, and urge our representatives and elected officials in Washington, DC, to do the same. Whereas we encourage the community to support and actively participate in the annual events of commemoration and remembrance, and to increase their efforts to educate our community not only about the Armenian genocide, but all of man's in humanity to man. Now, I, therefore, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of City of Glendale, proclaim the week of April 23, 2018, as the Week of Remembrance, and invite all members of the community to participate in the activities and events of the Week of Remembrance. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Dan Bell, Community Relations Coordinator, City of Glendale, and I will be brief, but I do want to highlight some of the events, and the folks at home can see. We are honored this year to have two, the co-hosts, our co- emcees, keynote speakers this year, Dean Kane and Montell Williams, who are producers of the film, the feature film Architects of Denial. So the committee, and you'll meet them in one moment, really had a strong desire to have these two gentlemen as our keynote speakers, and we're honored that they accepted, and so we're looking forward to their comments to the audience at this very special event commemorating the Armenian genocide. So I will be brief. You can see there on the flyer, there are flyers available. Follow the city on Twitter, @myglendale, and you see our information there and all of our social media platforms. Follow that for updates on all of the events, but you can go to Alex Theater for tickets, alextheater.org, if the public is looking for tickets to the event, either on the 24th, or we are also partnering with LA County Supervisor Catherine Barker on the 25th. Next slide, if we can, on the screening of Crows of the Desert, A Hero's Journey Through the Armenian Genocide. And this is a great collaboration between City of Glendale, our committee here, who you'll meet again in a second, and Catherine Barker's office, LA County Supervisor. So without further ado, I'd like the committee members to come up, introduce themselves, and mention the organizations that they represent, and I'd like to personally thank them as staff for their volunteer hours that they put in to present these events to the community. So without further ado, one by one, committee members.
Carmen Liberidian, Armenian Relief Society and Homoskein Cultural Society.
Welcome.
Lena Bazoyan, Armenian Relief Society and Armenian Cultural Foundation.
Honorable Mayor Sinanian, council members and city staff, this is the 17th year in a row that I'm standing here to thank you for the organization of the Week of Remembrance. That was a follow-up of the Citizens Memorial Council that was formed by City of Glendale years ago. I'm Ara Aronian, and I represent Armenian Rights Council of America, and as Mr. Bell introduced, the whole program for the year, and it was really, really, that we put together under the chairmanship of Mr. Garbedian and the co-chairmanship of Mr. Agajanian, and it's a pleasure to work with them for the first time as co-chairs of this event, and hopefully, our city will have those two events during the Week of Remembrance, because both, both events, I guess, they commemorate, and man's in humanity against man, especially the event for the Armenian genocide. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Aronian.
Gabriel Malloyan, Armenian Council of America. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Artim Manukyan, Armenian National Committee, Glendale Chapter. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? Yes, Mr. Harpetian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the committee members. This event has been, as was mentioned, this is the 17th year, and they've done a great job. It was a pleasure to work with you this year, myself, and I have the honor to work with you guys as the chair and my good colleague, Councilmember Agajanian, as co-chair. We are co-chairs, and this was an eye-opening experience for me. It was my first time, as was mentioned, to be involved in this process. This is not an easy process. Takes a lot of hours, volunteers' hours, so many hours to put a good, short program, but very meaningful program together. I also like to thank the City of Glendale for hosting this event, because this is a city-sponsored event, and every year, after year, after year, for 17 years, this event's been hosted in, at Alex Theater. Also like to thank our supervisor, Catherine Barker, for teaming up with us this year. On April 25, as was mentioned, Crows of the Desert, it's a documentary. I encourage everyone to participate and watch this documentary as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes, Mr. Harpetian.
I would like, I would like to thank the committee members, and they put very nice program together. I invite every person who are watching us to come and participate in coming events, and thank you for coming.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Well, I miss you guys. We did this for 12 years together, and I know you'll have a great program again this year. I will not be speaking at the program, so those of you who are planning on coming only to see me, there are plenty of other great speakers and performances, and thank you to the City of Glendale, to us, for making this an annual event that is becoming more and more recognized throughout the region, and of course, to the hard-working members of the committee. It's an interesting dynamic that you have there. Some people don't like to speak too much, others are very eloquent with their words. Mr. Araronian, thank you for your hard work for 17 years. I think you're the, as the longtime statesman of the group, I think you're entitled to certain a little bit, a little bit more. So thank you. We hope everyone comes in. Let's pack. Let's pack the Alex. There's no excuse that the Alex is not, it should not be packed on that day in this city, for what this city means to Armenia and what Armenia means to this city, and the issue of the genocide is burning so brightly throughout the year here. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors, it's a free program. You get to the website to get the tickets, and it's thoroughly enjoyable. to get the tickets and it's thoroughly enjoyable. So, thank you very much.
And if I may, I'd just like to also invite everyone in the community to come. It's always a, an entertaining evening, but it's also a good lesson. It's a good education in the history of, of the Armenian community. It is a good example of the diversity in our community and about your, your home and what you've gone through, your community, your ancestors. And I really encourage everyone out there that loves music and dance and history and culture to make that event on the, what is it, the 24th, at the Alex Theater. It's always a wonderful event. And thank you for all the hard work you put into it.
Yes, so thank you.
From staff, I want to thank the council for their continued support. I've worked with all of you on these events over the years. And this year has been a pleasure. Mr. Agajian, Mr. Carpetian, thank you. But thank you to all of you for your support, for supporting the committee and staff in, in what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think we're very fortunate to live in a city where we're able to properly commemorate the Armenian genocide every year. And that takes organization, it takes resources, staff time and resources to make it happen. And every year, we do that. We do that because it's important, we do that because it's the right thing to do. So, thank you, everyone. And I'm going to present you the proclamation and invite all of my-- Oh, Lily, are you part of the committee? Okay, well, I thought she just wanted to stand there.
Sometimes she makes it on time, sometimes not. But let her introduce herself or spending the time with the committee.
Lily Alwakhan, I've been part of the Armenian Genocide Commemoration Committee for about, I guess, seven years. I haven't counted yet. So, and it's, it's always been a pleasure working, cooperating with the City of Glendale. I do love the city and this is one another step that the city is taking to honor the community, Armenian community that lives here. And I do truly appreciate everything that is being done on behalf of the city. Couple of times, I have had common across issues and the way the city handled it. And I think the city is doing a great job and it's an example for other cities that do have populations, like big populations of other nationalities living in the city. So, thank you very much for everything. And thanks a lot for the proclamation as well.
Thank you for making it. Okay, now I'm going to present the proclamation. I'm going to invite any of my colleagues that'd like to join me in doing so. Mr. Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is the consent items, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Have there been any requests for separate consideration?
No, no cards have been submitted.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga Janian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
And Carpetian?
Yes.
And Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item on the agenda, City Council and staff comments.
Do we have council comments?
In just a time, I don't, I--
Thank you, sir. Adam Divine?
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to take me. Okay, that's fine. Go ahead. Yes.
Okay, sir, floor is yours.
I would like to nominate Laura Parazyan for an under term for Housing Authority, as a Housing Authority member.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. Before we take a vote, I will, yes.
That's for, to come back next week.
Yes.
It will come, it will come very well. So, it'll come back for vote next week, but I'll just state that--
About May 1st.
May 1st, sorry.
May 1st, because next week we're dark. That's correct. April 24th. She has served on Housing Authority for a number of years. I'm not sure how, how many, but a number of years. And she's been an outstanding member and a really contributing member of the Authority. And I want to thank--
Three years, I was told.
Three terms, perhaps.
Three terms? Three years.
At least, I mean, I've, I've been here for five and she's, she's been there that whole time and before. So, three terms sounds right. So, I want to thank you for nominating her. I think she'll continue contributing a lot to us. And I welcome the nomination. So, yes, sir, please, go ahead.
I would like to talk about grandmother-in-chief. Former First Lady Barbara Bush died today at age 92. One of only two women in American history to be First Lady and Mother and other President, like George Bush, to George Bush's anyway. And once she famously said, "My career was my family." May God bless his, her soul.
Thank you, Ms. Najarian. That's good. So, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting?
You want to adjourn in the memory of Barbara Bush? Very well. Adam Divine, would you like to do it now?
Yes, I, I would like to, first of all, mention that this afternoon, or this morning, I was told that there seems to be a lot of trash on Central. And it is dog walkers that are leaving trash on the sidewalks and that perhaps we need more receptacles on the street. And I'm thinking that maybe we could have certain ones that are marked like for pets. I, I'm just an idea. But I, I think maybe we should look into that. I was thinking maybe the ambassadors could work on that, but they're only on brand, as I understand it. So, I think maybe if we could look into that would be great. Thank you.
Should we have maybe more training for dog owners?
Yes, yes. I don't know if it's all those people that are living in the apartments or if it's regular, you know, homeowners. I'm sure it's the apartment owners that need to, maybe we should put signs in the apartment buildings. The other thing I wanted to mention was I had the honor of moderating an event on human trafficking awareness sponsored by Serpent's International of Glendale and Glendale Community College with speakers from CAST, which is the Coalition Against Sex Trafficking. It was powerful, it was educational. We, there were about 80 people there, attendees. There were college women, college men, faculty members. And it was quite educational. It was interesting. You know, we all think that human trafficking, whether for commercial reasons or for sexual reasons, whatever, that it's happening somewhere else. But it's happening here. It happens in our city, LA. It is not always in foreign countries. It was so successful that they are going to do another program in, in November. So, I hope that some of you that are listening out there might get information in November and attend. It's, it's quite, quite educational. And the second event that I attended, and my fellow council members also, huge success, was the Cherry Blossom Festival. And I think, Mr. Kasakian, you might have photos for us. Some of these photos were from Arlene Bedore, so we want to thank her. There were, this was the first annual Cherry Blossom Festival. We had over 2,000 people in attendance, including, as shown in the picture, the Council General Chiba, two council members from Osaka who had come representing the Rotary and the Lions Club. And we planted a cherry blossom tree that they had brought for the occasion. And the festival was, was fantastic. I want to give a special shout out to Mike Vetzer, who's on the board of the Friends of Shoshion, who helped put this together. He does the events for the board. And it was quite fascinating. It was fun. You can see all of the people. They ran out of food. They, we never, we didn't expect to have that big of a crowd, but it was pretty spectacular for the first year. And next year it's going to be even better because we're going to have more cherry blossom trees, so it's going to be even pinker. So, I wanted to thank Parks and Rec and, and Mike and everyone involved in putting this event on. It was spectacular. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. The City Council, two weeks ago, perhaps three weeks ago, in honor of Earth Day, instructed staff to make all transit rides on the B Line on Sunday, April 22nd, free of charge. And the B Line runs from approximately 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, you can just hop on the bus, leave your car at home, leave the Uber at home, and, and get on the B Line bus. If you want to know about our routes, just go to glendalebeline.com. And of course, there's a route up and down Central and Brand. There's a route that goes to Montrose from Kenneth Village to Glendale College. So, there's several convenient routes. So, good job on the Glendale City Council for that. But in conjunction with that, Metro is also having all of its buses, trains, and subways free of charge on Sunday. No fare needed, no tap car needed. So, you can go around the whole county, starting with your first step from Glendale on the B Line and the Metro system. That's the subways, the light rails, the gold line, the orange line, red line, the Expo Line to Santa Monica, and everything in Glendale is going to be free of charge, hoping to get people interested in taking transit. And we can all celebrate Earth Day on April 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
You know, the other thing, Mr. Mayor and council members, I got an, an email because we were talking about street names the other day. And one of the writers, residents, wrote to me and said, "I see these streets with some weird names. Can you tell me about them?" And one street that he said is Andinus Drive. And I'm not even sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, whether it's Andennis, Andines. And I was curious too. I'd never heard of that name. I looked it up. Andinus is named after a village in Norway. Isn't that interesting? There was another name that the, that the resident asked me, was about La Mago Drive. La Mago, I'm not sure how that's pronounced either. But La Mago turns out to be a city in Portugal. And La Mago is a Portuguese name. So, if you have any other questions, keep writing and I'll try and answer them for you. Thank you.
Clearly, the heritage of our ginormous Norse and Portuguese community is being honored.
You would think so, yes.
Thank you. I have no comments. Thank you, everyone, for yours. And thank you to Glendale for providing us a myriad of events to attend on a weekly basis. That keeps us very, very occupied. Yes, hourly base, on a hourly basis. But I do have speaking cards, three-minute speaking cards. And I'm going to invite you up, one by one. Albert Rostomian, first individual, followed by Mike Moehl, followed by Emin Asaturianz. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First, in the past five days, I don't know if you guys, following the events in Armenia, thousands of protesters, peaceful, are marching in the streets of Yerevan against gangster Serge Sarkisian, his third term in office, and his mafia, who are occupying the Armenian government. The police used tear gas, physical force, and took people into detention for more than three hours, which is illegal. Now, there's a political party who supports dictatorship, who has 30,000 police officers in a country of 2 million people. In contrast, Los, LA County has 4 million people with 12,000 officers. They have 30, over 30 political prisoners. And one of them is an American. His name is Gado Yernukyan. He has been in pre-detention trial for over a year and a half. Now, we have a political party who, who supports this dictatorship. And the name of the organization is the Armenian Revolutionary Federation, the Armenian National Committee of America, and Haidat. So, now you may say, "Why, why are you telling us?" We're just council members. This is City of Glendale. Well, most of you are associated with ANCA or the Armenian Revolutionary Federation. So, it is time to disassociate yourself with the dictatorship. We don't want dictatorship in Armenia. We want free and fair elections. We want democracy. We want human rights. That's what we want. Also, I was here on March 27th, made us, we made a suggestion that Artsakh, regarding Artsakh Street, I suggested we should add the names of the heroes on the list. I was wondering if you guys thought about it? Do you vote on it or you have any comments?
Thank you. Any comments? This is your three-minute speaking time. Thank you so much for coming and expressing yourself. And, second, Mike Moehl, followed by Emin Asaturianz.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before I give my speech, I'd just like to make a comment for you, Mr. Mayor and Mrs. Beers. Before the announcement about the Indigo Hotel, you said, "No jobs," and you said, "You all can go home." That's, that was the message that, that one of the leaders of the union came up to me afterwards and wanted to talk about that. And if you look at the tape, I'm just telling, your message, Mrs. Beers and Mr. Sinanian, was offensive to her and her group. Now, what I'm trying to say is that it's not what you said, it's how you said it. So, look at the tape later on and you can see what I, why she was very offended. She says, "Mr. Moehl, I'm very hurt." Okay, that's one. Number two, I, I'd like to congratulate Naira Sukbatian. She was one of the leaders of to spearhead the, the Indigo Hotel. She organized and she fought, she got her people together. I'd like to congratulate her for the effort she did. As far as the Indigo Hotel, Mr. Najarian, were you going to vote yes for stage one and two and then vote no on the final stage? Artim, would you please show my video? Good afternoon, folks. My name is Mike Moehl, editor of your Glendale Community Newsletter. I'm in front of the Monstrosity Vestilla Apartment Complex at the former site of Office Depot. That's at, again, that's at the corner of Broadway and Pacific, in a quiet residential neighborhood outside of the DSP. That's the downtown Pacific Plaza. Councilman Ara Gajarian, the president of council, he tells the public he was against all these big apartment complexes. Here they are, the Altima, the Harrison, the Lexon Orange, the Camden Glendale Apartments, the Campus Apartments, the City Bank Project. He goes on council, ladies and gentlemen, and says he's against these apartments. But you know, not only is Mr. Najarian a lawyer, he's also a mathematician, because he knows how to count. Because behind closed doors, he knows there are four votes who's going to vote yes on these projects. Now, during the, during the process of these apartment complexes, stage one is the foundation. Everybody votes yes on stage one, including Mr. Najarian. Stage two is framing in the architecture. Mr. Najarian votes yes on that too. But because behind closed doors, he knows there are four votes who are going to approve, or four other councilmen are going to approve this apartment complex, he'll vote no. Now, he says, "I'm a hero." He also will tell you that he voted and he wants another moratorium. He keeps saying-- He keeps saying, "In 2012 and 2014 or '15..."
Time is up.
Okay. So here's the mailer that Mr. Najarian sent out.
But time is up.
Thank you. And he tells everybody, "Hey, I'm a hero. I voted against these buildings."
Mr. Moehl, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We love having you here every day. And I saw Mr. Passarella take that video as you were taping it. I did. And it was right on the intersection of Pacific and Broadway, one of the busiest intersections in Glendale, far from a quiet residential neighborhood. Come on. As far as my comment to the unite here, folks that were here, I just pointed out the axiomatic truth. There's not going to be a hotel where dozens and dozens of individuals that badly need jobs could work. That's all. No jobs. Why clap for it? That's what I didn't understand. Again, it's an axiomatic truth. No hotel, no job. That's it. Period. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear Mrs. Beers say anything to the effect of, "Please go." That's just not, that's not how we operate. In any case, thank you very much for your comments, and we'll move on to Emin Asaturians.
My name is Emin Asaturians, and I am an AGBU GenX mentee. And I go to Toll Middle School.
My name's Andrew Morabian.
And my name is Daniel Gargashirvanya. So the thing I wanted to talk about today is that, like, Verdugo Skate Park doesn't allow scooters, so it's sort of not fair enough for the scootering community, because, like, the only skate parks that allow scooters are in Montrose, the Lacrima Skate Park, or in the Montrose Park, and there's a skate park called Skate Lab in the Simi Valley. That's a little far away. And although skateboarding is great, there are people who prefer scootering more than skateboarding. Therefore, I suggest that Verdugo Skate Park allows scooters at different times. For example, let's say the skate park opens at, like, 10 o'clock. From 10 to 12, there could be skateboarding, and from 12 to 2, there could be, like, scootering. And then from, like, 2 to 4, there can be, like, biking or anything else. So, yeah, there.
There. I like it. Good for you, Emin.
Therefore, that was my suggestion. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. No questions. I do have a question for Onik Gulanikan. Can you look into it? There you go. Mr. Gulanikan is the director of our parks, and he's the right person to talk to. Now, he's aware of this issue, and he'll look into it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you do all of that in the skate park? I mean, the...
Yeah.
The pits?
In the pits, is that what you call them? You do biking and...
Bowls.
Yeah.
Wow, I didn't know that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to Mr. Kosakian for coming by yesterday and spending some time with our kids and inspiring them to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, I was a mentor with GenX. That was a long time ago, a long time ago. Those are all the speaking cards that we have. Thank you, everyone. What's next, Mr. Kosakian?
Under action items, A-8 is a director of public works regarding Kenneth Road Rehabilitation Project. A-8A1 is motion awarding a construction contract to Palp Inc., DBA Excel Paving Company in the amount of $1,228,619, approving a 10% reserve for contingency in the amount of $122,861.90, rejecting all other bids, and authorizing city manager to execute the contract. At A-8A2, is a motion authorizing an increase to West Coast Arborist Contract in the amount of $36,200, and authorizing city manager to execute the necessary contract change order.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as the clerk read into the record, we are here asking for your approval to move forward with Excel Paving Company for a total of $1,474,480.90 in terms of dollar amounts. This project would be on Kenneth Road between Sonora and Alameda, and it's a rehab project for Kenneth Road. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Gulanian is here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Gulanian?
If there are no questions, I'll move the item. If there are questions, second.
If there are no questions, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item, please. Next item, Matt. A-8D is director of community services and parks regarding memorandum of understanding MOU between City of Glendale and the Glendale Unified School District for a transfer of maintenance operations and management responsibilities of Stengel Field. B-1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute the MOU.
Thank you, Mayor Sinanian, members of the council. A few years ago, excuse me, a few years ago, Glendale Unified came to staff and asked if we would be interested in working on an agreement for them to take over the maintenance and operation of Stengel Field. So back in 2003, we worked on a two-year agreement, just to try it out, for them to take over the maintenance and operation. Since the agreement was successful, we had no issues, and basically, Crescent Valley High School used that field as their home field. Glendale College uses it as their home field. We decided to work on a 20-year MOU for them to take over the maintenance and operation, the scheduling, utilities, and so on. With that being said, Crescent Valley High would have priority to use the field as their home field, then Glendale Community College, and then they would have it available for the youth leagues that use the field, let it be Glendale Little League or Bay Perman, Bay Perman Little League, and so on. So we are requesting council to approve a 20-year MOU with Glendale Unified. The Board of Education did vote on it March 11th, and it did pass. So if it passes tonight, then we'll go ahead and sign the agreement and forward it to Glendale Unified staff.
Yes, just a quick question. Are there any extensions on the 20 years?
There is no extension. Section 1.3.1 states that both parties do have 180 days to cancel the agreement. It is an MOU, not a lease agreement. But our goal is for Glendale Unified to raise funds, to build a clubhouse that was there, you know, a few years ago. The clubhouse did have some damage and some mold issues, structural issues. So in 2012, we demolished it. The city went in, went ahead and put bleachers to house their home games.
And I remember the clubhouse, and it was all deteriorated, so we had to demo it. So the second question is, do we have any rights to use the property, you know, once in a while, or a few times a year?
Yes, we can use the facility 10 times a year for any of our events, let it be concerts. We do get a number of filming requests. In the past, we've had filming requests, so we have asked GUSD if we get that filming request, that we do keep, the city will keep the revenue.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have one question. Is there anything new in this MOU that wasn't in the old one?
Everything is the same, except the utilities. While the first MOU, the two-year MOU, we were paying for the utilities, and they would reimburse us. This MOU, we made them install a meter, electric meter and a water meter, and they would be billed directly through Water and Power, GWP.
Great, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Item 8C, please. 8C is director of community services and parks regarding community services and parks, TSB, 2017 Senior Needs Assessment Report. C-1 is a motion approving the report and providing direction on staff recommendations. Two is a motion approving City of Glendale new membership with AARP, Age Friendly Network of Cities 2018.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm going to go to Maggie Kavarian, who is our senior community services supervisor, and intricately involved with senior services here in Glendale, and can take you through the report.
Mayor Sinanian, members of the City Council, I'm Maggie Kavarian with the Community Services and Parks Department. I'm here to present the feasibility of the Senior Services Committee and the Senior Needs Assessment that was conducted by our unit. We looked at the history of the possibility of a Senior Services Committee, and we looked at the start date of 1981, where the Greater Glendale Council on Aging formed as a nonprofit. Many of their members did similar Senior Services Committee activities, but their numbers dwindled. Many of those members retired and left the area. We also partnered with ASTER, Assistance Seniors Through Enhanced Resources. It's another nonprofit organization. But their focus is on seniors that live in the foothills of Glendale, Lacrima, La Quinada, and Tahanga. We reached out to leaders in aging services at the three local area hospitals and realized that Adventist Health, Indignity Health, Glendale Memorial were very excited about the possibility of a Senior Services Committee. USC Verdugo Hills actually has a community advisory board, but they're not senior-specific. So we had a starting point. We knew back in September that we wanted to conduct a Senior Needs Assessment, and we wanted to identify needs and gaps in senior services. We wanted to look for innovative ways to do this. We wanted to evaluate the need to create and implement a Senior Services Committee. And then we wanted to identify a sustainable approach for establishing these priorities, because we have 45,000 seniors that currently live in Glendale that are 60 years and older. So we started with a focal question. How do we serve more seniors and/or service seniors more effectively? And we looked at three priorities. Keeping seniors in their homes longer, providing services to them to optimize their quality of life, and ensure those who are frail and sick are identified. So with the focal question, we had four pathways. We created a senior survey. We had a focus group meeting with stakeholders in the community. We had already interviewed our aging care leaders at the hospitals, and then we wanted to practice, to have best practices. The methodology that we used had 12 domains, eight that we chose from AARP, Network of Age Friendly Cities, and four were added by our senior services staff. One in particular that sticks out is the emergency preparedness, which we included. The time that we were working on this methodology was the hurricane season, and we knew that in Houston, Florida, and in Puerto Rico, seniors in those areas were affected by those floods. And we know that we live in earthquake country, and we knew that we wanted to include emergency preparedness in our domains. So we created and distributed the senior survey using those 12 domains, and the survey was distributed, over 200 surveys were distributed throughout Glendale to community centers, libraries, apartment complexes, to our homebound clients and hospitals. We received 147 completed and returned surveys. Next, we had our focus group meeting. Our focus group meeting included 37 stakeholders who are part of the Glendale community. They broke out into five respective groups, and again, we discussed those 12 domains within those groups. So we analyzed the data. The senior survey in the focus group addressed those 12 domains, and we asked the question, "What are the three top priorities affecting seniors in our Glendale community?" And the results were, the senior survey showed us, of course, housing. Almost 80% that completed the survey felt that housing was most important to them. It was a top priority. Communication and information was next, and emergency preparedness, surprisingly, was third for the seniors. Now, when we asked our network of stakeholders, again, they felt that housing was the most important. Of the five breakout sessions, all five chose housing as the highest priority domain. Communication and information was three out of five, and transportation was three out of five. Now, I will say that transportation portion had to do with pedestrian safety and not so much the services that we offer at the B-line. So here we have the senior survey results. As you can see, this is the housing, with the high priority being almost 80%, medium priority, low priority, communication and information, emergency preparedness, and this was the senior response for transportation. So we developed six key recommendations after analyzing all this data. We wanted, we knew we wanted to develop housing strategies for seniors to find alternative housing options. We definitely believe the creation of a Senior Services Committee is important, because the second priority was communication and information. And we know that through the Senior Services Committee, we can have that communication and information be outreach. We wanted to develop an intra-agency plan to educate seniors on emergency preparedness with our fire and police department. We also wanted to work with the Senior Services Network, again, to develop and provide trainings on health care and caregiver training. We wanted to work with the Senior Services Network, again, to promote senior safety, frauds, scams, elder abuse, and pedestrian safety. And then last but not least was, we wanted to become a member of the AARP Age Friendly Network of Cities, to make a commitment to actively work towards making the City of Glendale a great place for people of all ages. So upon discussing the committee selection process, our recommendations are to have 13 members preside over the Senior Services Committee, with five members being chosen by the city manager's office, four members being city staff, three members being part of that hospital representatives, and one member being a Glendale senior to advocate. The ideal candidate should obviously have a professional background in aging services or a background in one or more of those 12 domains that we had reviewed. We took this report to our Parks Commission, and our Parks Commission also gave us feedback. They felt, they were looking at it more towards the actual assessment itself, and they felt that, they recommended that surveys be in multiple languages, because our survey was distributed in English only. They believed that we should develop new strategies to get better samplings of seniors, since we have 45,000 seniors and only 149 return those surveys. Commissioners would also like to be part of the process of selecting Senior Services Committee members and developing strategies to outreach to underserved seniors. And then they felt that we should collaborate more with neighborhood associations and community organizations regarding those emergency preparedness plans. So in conclusion, we recommend the approval of our Senior Needs Assessment Report. We definitely support the creation of the Senior Services Committee, which will meet quarterly and be comprised of seniors in Glendale and aging network. We would meet at the Adult Recreation Center four times a year. There is absolutely no fiscal impact, because city staff would oversee those meetings, and our, and the facility would be a city facility. And then we'd like to become part, a member of the AARP Network of Age Friendly Cities to participate and promote a commitment to actively working towards making City of Glendale a great place for all ages. That concludes my report, and if you had any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kavarian. Any questions?
I have one question. The four meetings that you, this committee, will hold during the year, will they be open to the public, since you only have one senior representative on the committee?
They will most definitely be open to the public, since it's at the Adult Recreation Center. The public is pretty much there every day, seven days a week.
That's great. You know, we have an aging population here in Glendale. I'm surprised we only have 45,000 over the age of 60. I would have expected that to be a higher number. I'm really happy that we, this assessment, has proven to us that this committee is necessary. I am also happy that we're joining the AARP Age Friendly Network, because that will give us more information for seniors, more handouts, and just make, perhaps, speakers. So I think that is a good thing, and I thank staff for all of your work in getting this information gathered. And it's funny that the reason this request came to me, and I brought it to you, to staff, was because of transportation. And it wasn't because of pedestrian safety, it was because of buses and the B-line. And now it turns out that that really isn't a high priority. However, it has come to this end, and I'm so happy that we will have this senior committee. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Zagajanian?
Is this committee, will be as advisory committee, or will decide something? Because we have so many committees, so I just wonder...
It will be strictly an advisory committee to give out resources to our seniors in the community.
I just don't want to take anything away from this, but I don't want later to be accused of working with Democrats. AARP is close to Democrats. AARP is close to Democrats. Republicans have another committee, similar to AARP. So did you consider the other one? So Republicans will not accuse us of anything?
Did that even, yeah. I don't know that that even entered our minds.
I didn't even say anything. I wasn't jumping up and.
I will tell you why we, the reason why we want to be part of the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Cities is it is actually a global organization. It started with the World Health Organization and AARP wanted to come on board and create that same network within the United States. And AARP really is the premier aging network, aging nonprofit that provides grant opportunities, resources to people like ourselves and our, and the business that we do.
Mayor, I'm very sorry. The reason I'm saying that because Rush Limbaugh and Sean Hannity constantly advertising the other group. So I just wanted, just to mention.
So Mayor, all I want to know.
We have a nonpartisan city council. I want everyone to know that. There's no R or D behind our names. Thank you very much. So if anyone would be complaining under that scenario, it would be me. So I have no problems with this.
Thank you.
I echo my colleague's comments, but I, I just want to know if we joined, if the city joins the AARP, we don't have to individually join them, right? Because I received a letter, I just didn't open it yet.
The letter comes at, I think, age 50, if I'm not mistaken. You do not have to join AARP.
So you got it about nine years ago, Sean? Nine, ten years ago.
The state, the state director, I shouldn't call him out, but the state director of AARP lives in the city of Glendale and he would love to have City of Glendale be part of that network.
Very good. Do we have a?
I would like to move the item.
All right, very nice.
Second.
How appropriate. Thank you.
I won't take that personally. It was just my idea, that's why I would like to.
Tremendous respect.
It has nothing to do with age.
All jokes aside. Of course. Thank you for moving it and seconding it. Maybe we have the wrong call.
Third second.
Yes, there was. Councilman Ogierian did.
All right, Councilmember Zaka Janian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Harpedian?
Yes.
Even though it was your idea, I'm voting for him.
Oh.
And Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
D is Director of Community Development regarding Central Park Block Master Design and Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center for California, AAMCCC. D1 is a motion approving the master concept design and directing staff to proceed with schematic design based on feedback as directed by city council. Two is motion approving stage one design submission. Three is motion authorizing staff to complete lease negotiation with the AAMCCC for the property based on the business terms described in the staff report and as directed by city council and further directing staff to return to city council for consideration of the lease after negotiations are complete.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to go directly to Darlene Sanchez. She has a presentation and she's going to pass it then on to SWA and also the architects. So with that, Darlene.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. Tonight is the next step in the implementation of the council's vision to reimagine and re-energize Central Park Block. So well, tonight is the time to view the conceptual plans for both the block and the museum. The items before you are really a progression of discussions over the years. Public meetings on this topic dating back to 2014, community outreach meetings, as well as many, many meetings between city staff, our master design firm, as well as the museum committee. So tonight, there are really two separate but interrelated projects that you're being asked to consider and provide your direction on. The first is related to the conceptual design layout of Central Park Block. To give you the context of the community outreach data, as well as the specifics of the design, the city's master design firm, SWA, will provide that detail for you. The second part that you're being asked to provide direction on are the specifics of the proposed museum that is cited within that Central Park Block. We're requesting that you provide comments on the preliminary design, as well as on the proposed business terms. So with that, I'd like to present Gerto Quino. Gerto is the principal project manager at SWA, after which planning staff will discuss design. I'll present the ground lease terms and then we'll also introduce the architect.
Honorable Mayor, council members, happy to be in front of you again. It's, it's been very exciting and I'm very positive about the progress we've made so far. I have 20 slides to share with you, about 10 minutes, but I think you'll find that, again, much progress has been made and there is a lot of healthy collaboration between ourselves as the master landscape architect planner and the museum, museums architects and city staff. All right, here we go. So this was the diagram that was shared with you back in December 5th. There was a lot of support for this, the notion that you're getting this really great central open space in your downtown. The diagram reads clearly and I'm happy to say that even today, as I stand here in front of you, we still have a very strong diagram that connects to what you see here on the screen. And I'll take you through the, the finer components of that and how we got to where we are today. So a quick recap. This diagram shows what you have today, right? So it shows in square footage, you have approximately 76,000 square feet today. The introduction of the proposed museum reduces that square footage to a lower number, brings it down to about 47,000 square feet of open space. And then certainly that's not desirable. So the solution was to reclaim that open space by replacing the parking, the surface parking that you have out there now with open space. And by doing that, we actually gain more open space. We're up to 92,000 square feet and, and that's a really good thing. The green space is still connected, it's contiguous, and it starts to embrace the entire block. So it's a, it's a really good figure in terms of the shape of open space. Okay, so the park components. Again, this material was presented back on December 5th. I just want to give a very quick recap. If you look at the string dimensions on the left-hand side in that, in that bright pink color, again, back in December 5th, we had recommended that the proposed museum is set 30 feet back from Colorado Street. The footprint of the building in that dimension is about 165 feet. And the central open space then has a really healthy size of 195 feet by 205 feet, which gives us a, a close to 40,000 square feet for an open space, central open space. And that's almost an acre, which is great. The other spaces, Forest Park, about 37,000 square feet, and then what we're calling Colorado Green, which is in between the ARC and the proposed museum at about 15,000 square feet. So these were some of the principles that we had recommended to you in terms of good planning and good design principles. Today, the, the update to this, and this is an update in terms of what has transpired over the past few months since December, we're, we're in April now. And you can see that the string dimensions on the left have changed. The, the distance of the museum from Colorado Street is now 45 feet and that's primarily because of the requirements of the building, access to the front door. We had some really good discussions with, with the architects in understanding some of those requirements, ADA ramp, steps, et cetera. The dimension is still 165 feet on that, on that dimension, but you'll see that the central open space has reduced. What was 195 feet on that side is now 175 feet. The 205 feet is still the same, but the end result is that the central open space has reduced by 10%. And, and this is something I just want to, to highlight as part of our process and part of our thinking. All right. So keep that.
Quick question before we move forward.
Yes, yes, sir.
Comparing this two slides, slide number six and seven.
Yes.
So slide number six, if you go to slide number six, one back.
Yes, that's, that's slide number six.
Right, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
So that, that dash line, the red line that connects to the library, it's connected to the library, right?
Yes, it's, it's drawn, it's drawn to the face of the library building, yes.
And if you go to slide number seven, it's five feet away from it.
Yes, it's, it's a, it's an adjustment we made during the process to be a little bit more specific about face of building to face of building.
So what I want to, what I want to mention is instead of on slide six, which is 195 feet long, right? On slide number seven, it won't be 175, it will be 180 if you, if you measure it the same way.
Correct.
That's what, that's the only thing I wanted to mention.
That's absolutely right. If you want to do an apples-to-apples comparison, page seven, the updated diagram would be 180 feet.
Got it.
String dimension.
Thank you.
Yes, so that might, that might change the 10% to 9% or 9.5%. Okay, so keep, keep that in the back of your mind because I may return to that. The workshops we had were quite vibrant. We had very good attendance. We had a lot of interaction with different age groups. There was multi-generational representation and we had a series of exercises that the community went through to give us feedback, some of which is shown here. We had these ideas of these leave cutouts that people can put comments on and put their thoughts. The priorities that came out of those workshops are listed there in those four bullet points. Culture, community, activity, relaxation, green spaces, and connection to nature. And so those were the priorities that we heard and we documented. Further, the workshops really started to give us the metrics that we needed to create a real hierarchy of what's the most important and, and what is maybe important but not as important as the top. And so the popular urban open space features, you can see them listed on, on the left-hand side in bullet points. Everything from art installation, cultural festivals, activity lawn, outdoor movies, cafe plazas, farmer's market, outdoor concerts, playgrounds, and tree grove, given the existing trees that we have on that site and wanting to preserve them and make them into a part of the park. Some of the images there are just a sample of the forms that we passed out and some of the attendees that made it happen. So the big takeaway were these design recommendations. And so from top being the most important and number 10 being important, right at the very top, again, this is, these are the metrics, these are all the scores that we tabulated, it's all the boxes that were checked off. And that's important for an outreach exercise so that when, as planners, when we make decisions, it's based on the fundamentals of what the community is really looking for. So number one, most important recommendation by the community is to provide places to experience community culture, activity, a connection with nature, and escape from the city. There's a lot of meaning in that, there's a lot of ways to interpret that, but to us, it means something that is about nature and it's about green. Number two is to prioritize art and culture. I think this is a city that really embraces both of those and, and why wouldn't this central open space have that quality? Number three, provide open, flexible green space. You know, we interpret that as flexible lawn space, something that you have today and that could be brought back in a different form, different location. Then number four, have programming that can be consistent throughout the park to create a positive environment. Number five, provide dedicated play features for children. Number six, have a regular outdoor dining and temporary markets, which is very popular right now in a lot of public parks across the United States. Number seven, serve the entire community of Glendale. And, and that's also important because it speaks to a lot of different needs and desires of everyone who lives and, and works here in the city. Number eight, evaluate potential safety issues. Number nine, evaluate parking, provide accessible parking, super important, and include a water feature if appropriate. So the images to the right kind of shows some of the, the evidence of people coming out and participating. And so we took those recommendations. We created a slide that you see here, which starts to consolidate a lot of those priorities and give us as planners and designers a starting point in which to start to give shape and meaning and function to this open space. And so I'm going to share with you three concepts that we created. All three concepts include the bullet points that you see here. So again, all three concepts include a great lawn, all three concepts include a children's play area, a forest park, a sculpture walk, onsite stormwater treatment, and inclusion of accessible parking. The images kind of speak to some of the aspirations of this park. So without further ado, I will take you through these concepts. But before I get to that, quick parking diagram, so I'd be remiss not to mention that we are cognizant about the parking needs in this city and how the potential for programming and activation can affect parking. So I just want to let you know that we are aware, we're doing active research and inventory of all the parking spaces around this block, whether it's an existing parking structure, surface lots, on-street parking, looking at, at streets that are adjacent or a block away. And so we, we are aware of that and we're going to continue to pursue parking demands for the project. Okay, so the first concept, this one's called Central Park with East-West Market Walk. And all that means is that there's a central park for sure, but it has an interesting element to it, which is the market walk. And so it's essentially an east-west market street, it's hardscape, it connects you from Mona to the area east around the ARC. You can see the central green in the center. You can see the relationship of the proposed museum to the south. The ARC starts to have kind of a front door, a proper front door, if you will, where they have a smaller space. It's kind of labeled there as quiet exercise. We located a fountain element, children's splash play closer to Louis Street, off to the right side of the, of the sketch. And then to the top right, utilizing those existing trees as a foundation to create a forest park with undulating mounds and wonderful flowering plants and other design elements. The library also has a very interesting position on the new open space. And so all three buildings, and actually even across the alleyway, now start to frame a really wonderful open space. So again, the emphasis on this one is an east-west market walk. Some of the imagery is really shared by all of these concepts, so I won't spend too much time talking about the imagery, but the top right image that, you know, the idea that you can have a, a market in the central park to be able to activate weekends or, or Thursday evening or Wednesday night and complement other uses of the park are really important. Okay, the second concept, so this one's called Central Park with Garden Plaza, whereas Garden Plaza is kind of the unique feature. Central Park is still there, still shown in the same position, roughly the same size, but now you can start to see that between the library and the ARC, there's a little bit more articulation, wide steps at the library where you can sit and hang out and kind of people watch. There's more of a hardscape plaza below that, closer to the ARC with fountains and sculpture. We even included what we call the game plaza for table tennis and other outdoor activity sports. And then you can see how the, the top right area is still the forest park, but it now has a children's play area that is more of a flexible space with different types of play equipment and, and other unique spaces. I also want to point out.
I have a question.
Yes.
You're calling the, the steps by the library, you're calling that the, what are you calling that?
Amphitheater seating.
Seating, amphitheater seating.
Yes.
Then you have the stage to the left and if the people are facing the park, they're not facing the stage? That seems a little awkward to me.
Yeah, let me explain that.
Okay.
So the, the notion of the amphitheater seating is, it's really an informal one. The elevation of the library is roughly four feet higher than the, the open space. And so instead of having a small steps, we're thinking of making them very broad and multifunctional. The, the stage. The stage is really just a plaza that can have a stage if it wants it. So we can erect a stage there, put all the things that it needs. And then the audience would really be situated on the open space. So they would be kind of spread out in that large green space with chairs and other kinds of furnishings, and they would focus on a stage activity in that space that we show in the library.
Not necessarily those steps.
One thing I wanted to point out on the previous one is that, on this one, the first one I showed you, the stage potentially could be in the location we show there, which is towards the center. And again, it's just a plaza every day, and then if you were to have an event, then a stage could be erected temporarily and then taken away. So we're encouraging kind of a flexible use of the space. And then, very quickly, let me kind of fast-forward to the third concept. This one is called the Central Park with Grand Steps. So again, the distinguishing feature is that along the alleyway, we would propose kind of a broad, wide civic type of steps with trees and planting and comfortable places to sit and hang out. And again, this is because of the grade change, there's about four feet, four to five feet of grade change between the alleyway, and the park is a little higher, at four to five feet higher. And so to program and utilize that space, we think there could be an interesting, an idea of some steps along that edge.
Does this diminish the size of the green space, the park?
It actually doesn't as much, because what we're trying to do in each of these schemes is provide a boundary that's somewhat even on all three. And if you look at all three, there is kind of an edge condition around all three. They're roughly the same shape, roughly the same size, but you did point out a very good observation that in this scheme, it does start to squeeze it a little bit. And so part of the process is to share with you options that could be shared into one.
And those be diminished, the steps be diminished, so that they don't take as much of the, you know what I mean? Not carve into as much?
Absolutely, they could be compressed. It's really more of an idea about programming. How do you activate that particular edge so you can activate the alleyway and really start to connect to Mona and other places west?
I do have a couple of quick questions. I just want to understand this clearly.
Yes.
With the Garden Plaza, right? The amphitheater seating and outdoor café, where does the café come to play? Because I can see the steps, and there's a stage right next to it, as was mentioned. And how many people can sit on those steps?
Right.
What is the capacity, basically?
Capacity. The idea of an outdoor café could be an idea that a pop-up kiosk could use the space that's identified as a stage. There's a lot of these F&amp;B, food and beverage kiosks, that could be utilized on activity days or event days when you need a drink or some food. And so the area that's described as steps and where you can see those little circles next to the building would be tables and chairs that would be coordinated with activities within the library as well as activities out in that open space.
Okay, so, tables and chairs, I can't tell, but, so, there will be tables and chairs on the ground level, because the steps, I don't know, where are the tables and chairs? I can't see it.
So we're showing these little circles. If you look at the edge of the library facing the open space--
Okay, I got it. On the west side.
Great, you can also use the mouse to show where it is, the mouse.
Oh, yes, sorry. Sorry about that. So the idea is that there could be café seating right in there, so that the plaza would be wide enough to have those kinds of activities. And really, the idea is that there could be tables and chairs scattered throughout this entire central open space. We embrace the idea of flexibility of uses and giving people a place to sit wherever they want to sit. And the spaces then start to really embrace all walks of life. So the grand steps, just to conclude, again, the grand steps being the distinguishing feature along the alleyway, some of the imagery kind of speaks to different ways in which we can bring vitality to this open space and the different functions. You'll see that in every concept, there's a very clean edge to the north side of the museum and how the museum faces the lawn in all three, it's very consistent. We had some good discussions with the museum architect in terms of how the museum can face the open space, in terms of like, where should the trees be? Should the trees be near the edges? Should they be a little bit far away? And so the drawings do acknowledge some of the desires of the museum architect to have some informal trees close by, but not directly in front of the building. And then on the north-south walkway, we were making some recommendations about creating some pedestrian access from the north-south walkway through the museum and then out. And so you'll see here, we are making recommendations of potentially allowing pedestrians to walk into what is essentially a covered plaza. We like the idea that pedestrians can move in and out through this open breezeway, which would be quite nice. And so we've given those recommendations to the architect. We've also made some recommendations in terms of how the shape of that open space can remain lawn, green, make it as big as possible. So those recommendations were also shared with the museum architect. And then, I know I'm taking too long here, so I really should try to conclude. Okay, so, conclusion. We still think this is Glendale's new gathering space. The process has been robust, we know it's not over yet. I think the input that we received from your group will be critical for how we can move forward into a schematic design, which will encompass really one schematic design plan. And that one plan, hopefully, will take the best ideas from all of these, or maybe it's just one. And that's the input that we'll need to receive from you. So again, market walk, garden plaza, grand steps, year-round activities, public amenities, and integrated within a busy urban context. We think it's a great opportunity, and I personally and everyone who's been working on the project look forward to your input.
Yeah, I remember, if I recollect, if I can remember right, the plans that we saw before, the north side where the museum, it had an approach, it had like steps coming up to get to the floor of the museum, the plaza which is underneath the building. Is that where it says .523? Point five, is that that?
Yes, so, there is still--
Those are the steps?
Yes, there are still steps right here. You can see that the museum's ground level is 32.5.
Right.
And the proposed open space is 31, so it's a foot and a half, six steps.
And the steps are outside of the building, or it's incorporated inside?
It is within the envelope of the building, yes. So, yes.
The building, if you're outside the building, you're at the park area. So, am I correct? You step down like four or five steps and you're basically level with the park area? The park area is all flat?
Yes, the idea is that once you get beyond that last step, that, what you see there--
Okay, that's the step, those are the steps.
Yes, those are the steps, and then you enter into kind of a thin terrace, and that terrace is the same elevation as the lawn.
Got it, so it's the same, at the same level?
Same level.
All right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have one more question for you. Was there any thought given to a stationary stage, let's say, a semi-circular concrete lifted, so that if there's a class there, a band there, they're elevated from the crowd, it stays there, instead of having a stage that moves around, or we can put in when we want it or not, or just have a, like, on this, on the particular, the grand steps, where you have the stage on the small park section on the right, yes, a small semi-stage there, so that if someone's doing a yoga class, they can be raised, because it just seems that there is really no kind of amphitheater, which was on the list, I think, of one of the, and something that I thought we would be able to incorporate. Was any thought given to that? I guess that's my question.
We're open to shapes, absolutely. And the idea is that whether it's a rectangular shape like this one or a semicircular shape, the programmatic goal is similar. That's a space where an instructor would stand and then, you know, everybody would kind of be laid out there. So I think that's really good input and something that we'll need to incorporate into the process.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I can ask, Milka Toledo, senior planner, she will take you through the Stage One Design piece of this discussion. And then I think we go back to Darlene Sanchez, who will talk about the initial lease terms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Milka Toledo. I will be briefly discussing the Stage One Design submittals. So, we have Stage One Design, which basically is a preliminary review of the museum's design prior to the Stage Two Design Review Submission. The project is reviewed by city staff and evaluated based on the design standards, the guidelines, policies, and objectives of the DSP. So the proposal involves the proposed development of a 59,800 square foot, three-story museum over a three-level, 262-space, subterranean parking garage located on a 52,450 square foot portion of the Central Park block. The zone is DSP Civic Centers District. Museum Cultural Centers is allowed in this zone, it's a permitted use in this district. The Central Park is one of the city's largest publicly-owned open space and principal parks within the downtown. In the DSP, Central Park is identified as a candidate for site or candidate site for strategic improvement. So the development of this museum addresses the city's goal in the district to develop the site with a public use. In fact, it will complement the existing public uses on-site, which includes the ARC, the library, and would also attract a wide range of activities to maintain a dynamic atmosphere, which is one of the goals and purpose of the DSP. The proposal is consistent with the vision of the DSP to create an exciting, a vibrant urban center, which provides an array of opportunities for residents, both locals and visitors, including but not limited to dining, entertainment, and cultural opportunities, in this case hence the museum, all located within a short walking distance. So undoubtedly, this is an ideal location for the museum. It will provide an opportunity to introduce, again, a public use that attracts local residents and visitors from other areas. And further, the museum will perpetuate a powerful physical image promoting the city's regional identity, another goal of the DSP. A minor variance is associated with the project. It is for the loading area. As currently designed, it would require variance because it's not completely located on the subject site, but again, it's a minor deviation that the applicant will address during, and will present during Stage Two. Mass and scale, there are no height, story, or FAR standards in the Civic Centers District. Height and massing for buildings are subject to design guidelines, and it is consistent with the previous direction provided at the December 5, 2017, City Council meeting for analysis, or framework analysis. Another view of the mass context, providing its relationship to the surrounding buildings. We have the Masonic Temple to the west, the ARC to the east, and the library to the north. And we see how it all integrates. And lastly, staff recommendations, which was mentioned earlier by SWA, which is to provide a pedestrian-level connection between the museum plaza and the proposed north-south promenade, and two, to ensure that the northern edge of the museum plaza is compatible with the approved Central Park schematic design, providing a clear delineation between the public and private spaces while also allowing an emphasis on the openness of the adjoining areas. And with that, I will conclude my remarks, and if you have any questions, I'm available. If not, I can turn it over to our staff.
Thank you.
Can you please repeat that last sentence, northern, is the northern where it faces the plaza itself, the main--
Are you referring to recommendation number one?
You just mentioned that northern side, that it to be compatible with the rest of the plaza, is that what it is?
Okay, so, to ensure that the northern edge of the museum plaza is compatible with the approved Central Park schematic design, providing a clear delineation between public and private spaces while also allowing an emphasis on the openness of the adjoining areas.
So the northern edge is where it faces the library, basically?
Yes, that is correct.
So, this recommendation, does this mean that it's not complying with that today, with the design that they have?
I will defer to Darlene for clarification.
I wouldn't say that they're not complying with it right now. I think it's a question and consideration that's being asked to be made as part of that. So, you know, that's something we can--
Can you elaborate a little bit more on that and what you're referring to in these two recommendations?
Because if I'm not mistaken, this is the north elevation, which is, I just want to understand what the, just a clarification. This is the north elevation, and I want to know what that recommendation is referring to. If you can.
One of the three concepts. So, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, as SWA went through that, we talked about the area just north and holding that line right there. That currently is 15 feet, and that's consistent, it's 15 feet consistent around all buildings in these concepts. The museum would like to have something larger than that, and it's our recommendation that we hold that at 15 feet. Perhaps that the discussion on this is better had after the museum presents their design and the reasons for wanting something larger. But we believe that staff, it's our recommendation that we hold that at 15 feet and try and maintain as much green space, or as much space that's green as possible.
If I can allow me to, so if I can restate what this says, and I want to help my colleagues understand this, because I think I do. What you're saying is that whatever the northernmost edge of the plaza ends up being, whether it's 15 or 30, you just want to make sure that it's, you know, there's a clear delineation between public and private space and it's compatible with the approved Central Park. It's kind of a vague sort of way of saying, let's make sure everything makes sense, right? Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, question?
And then, so that's recommendation number two?
Correct.
Okay, recommendation number one is referring to what?
Recommendation number one refers to--
Provide a pedestrian-level connection--
As we were, right there, as you see, and again, this may be more, better understood after the architect goes through. There's a wall feature there that separates that plaza of the museum from that patio space. It's staff's recommendation that we work with the architect to create a connection, a pedestrian connection, from that patio, that north-south patio into the museum. And again, the museum has their reason-- And again, the museum has their reasons why it is designed the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
And these recommendations are sort of in addition to other things, right? It's not, this is, are these recommendations sort of in a vacuum? That's all we're looking at today?
No, and well, in our, in our Stage One, we're recommending approval of the Stage One with those, and those are the two recommendations that we're making. So yes, you are going to give us direction on a scheme to go forward with. That scheme, whatever it is, and we would recommend it include 15 feet. The museum would like something more. You give us that direction, we'll go forward on that northern edge and that connection.
Yeah, but, yes, I do. Just going back to my point that it talks about the design as well, not just the distance between the building, private, the distance between private and public space. So, and also that 15 feet versus whatever, I don't know what is it that they want. It doesn't tell me if we want 15 feet and they're recommending 20 feet or 30 feet. I don't know what is it. I don't know what that magic number is, and I don't know if we are making a decision on that, on that distance tonight, or it's going to come back at Stage Two when everything is designed, when everything is put together with the, with the, with the Central Park.
We would like some direction on it tonight so that we can go forward and with the museum, and we can finalize our schemes, and they can finalize their design.
So this recommendation, the second item on the recommendation, staff recommendation, what is the distance that you're recommending? Because it doesn't tell me.
We're recommending 15 feet.
Okay, you're recommending...
15 feet that's, that's shown in those schematic design drawings. And again, in fairness, that's why I say perhaps it's better, the discussion better had, the museum has, and I think they've given you a letter, they've requested 35.
So there's a 20-foot difference?
Of, of...
And which?
Not space, not, it wouldn't be reducing space in that square, but it would be green versus hard, or landscape versus hardscape.
Can you tell me which scheme that, it shows the 15 feet and the 20 feet, 35 feet?
All three show 15 feet. There is not a 35-foot drawing there.
We can elaborate, we do at the end. We can elaborate between the difference on the 15 versus 35. It might make sense to have the museum's architect to show you, again...
I'm trying to get through these questions, so...
Okay, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to get a clarification, so...
So just a small segue into the proposed ground lease terms. Really, this is just two slides. What we're asking, what we're recommending is to ensure the long-term viability, a long-term lease, a 55-year term lease with four 10-year extensions, ground rent at a dollar per year. Prevalent wages would be part of this project, as well as a Central Park Facilities Management Committee. And this would be a committee made up of city staff and museum staff, where we would set a calendar for programming and activities within that open space, or that Central Park space. So we are still in the negotiation phases, phase of this. We do want your direction, like I said, so that we can finalize these terms before you. The ground lease, the SEQA document, the Stage Two Design Review would come back as well. That variance that we discussed related to the loading area. And again, the final schematic design for Central Park block. We would like ideally to bring this back in June. And it makes sense to bring it all together because, like Councilmember Garpetian mentioned, they are very interrelated. And it does make sense to kind of talk about them together. But there are some decision points that you're going to need to make that are a little different. We are looking for direction tonight on that concept plan, on any specific comments you have related to the museum design. And if you have any specifics related to the ground lease terms, we'd like to know that, that too. Because again, all of those little things will impact the bigger final package that is brought for you.
Okay. So one last question, Mr. Mayor. I think I found my, my 35-foot line. Is the 35-foot line where that underground parking structure ends?
No, it's not. That red line is to just show you where the parking structure is. But we do have a, we do have a schematic that will show you the difference between the 15 and 35. But I will invite the museum's architect, Aram Alajaji, and he's going to show you the specifics of the museum design. And like I said, we do have, we do have some additional slides that can show you, answer somebody's question.
Thank you. Before, before we move on, did I open the public hearing?
No.
Let's do that. Okay, Mr. Alajji, and you filled out a card, I assume this is the same?
Yes, I did.
This presentation is the same?
Oh, yeah.
How much time do you think you'll need?
If I, I'm directly going to go through my slides.
So how much time you...
20 minutes plus.
Okay.
No, just kidding. I'll do it faster this time.
Let's start with 20 minutes.
I don't want to promise.
All right.
So we start with the parking structure, which is right down below of the museum. We have two elevators. You know, this is very, we have three levels of parking. This is typical, second and third levels. We have two elevators, which is, one is the staff elevator that it only could be accessed by car, by the staff members. And the public elevator is located in a, on a far-right corner, if you can see it with a staircase. There are staircases to access to the plaza or to the museum. So, Alajji, and you can use the, use the mouse to point out? Move the mouse around, yeah? It will give you... Now, the entry is from Colorado. We have quite a wide entry, you know, coming into the garage and the sloping driveways that will take you down to the lower levels. And the elevators I was mentioning, we have a public elevator, which is right here with the staircase surrounding it. It's all surrounded with a glass element that is, would be illuminated at night, and daytime would be bringing the daylight into it. And a staff elevator, which would be a keyed entrance, you know, for the staff only, directly to the museum. Now, the museum guest elevator would be only on the, on the museum floor. On the parking level, we have all the ADA access parking, we have, we are locating some bicycle parking, also some chargers for electrical cars, you know, for, for the future use. Now, the, on the next slide is our museum floor. Let me, let me explain that this museum, the way it's designed, we're trying to elevate the main floor above the, the first floor, above the ground level, to basically to allow as much transparency that is available, you know, from the, and to be seen from Colorado to the library, as well as from library to Colorado. So this is glass enclosure here. Mainly, the building is supported by trusses. There are no columns in the area. So this plaza is fairly open, as well as the, the entry. Acum is open to the sky, which would, would be crowned by the skylight. We have, on the first floor, we have an auditorium. We have the staff entry. We have a public restrooms in here, staircases for the exit. And we have a guest elevator here for the museum goers to come in, you know, and they will be basically accessing from there, going to the museum floor. Now, this, we have a mezzanine floor, which is basically a technical floor. We have projection room and a mechanical floor in there. The main floor is the museum floor, which is elevated from the, from the ground level. What it does, you know, it keeps all the temporary and temporary exhibitions and permanent exhibitions on one level. So the visitors who are arriving in this floor by elevator, this is a massive elevator. It will probably hold about 10 to 15 people at one time. It's a glass elevator, moves from a lobby level to the museum floor or to the third floor. We have information desk right in the front. We have a gift shop right underneath, behind that element. And then the rest would be programmed for a temporary visiting museums and for a permanent museum. Now, we do have a temporary museum changing area where the, from the loading elevator will be coming here. We have a public restrooms, and we have a staff elevator, which will be used only by staff. Third-floor program has the, when you come up from the elevator, has a learning center into your left, has a demonstration kitchen into your right. Basically, that entire area could open up with a non-of doors or a glass doors towards the outside roof garden. Now, the staff elevators would be serving this. We have an administrative offices on the far end here, and we have our archives, which is a very important part of the museum, sitting on this area, with a cold room sitting on the back. Now, the roof plan shows that emerging skylight, which transparently becomes trellis work over the open space. We have, the entire roof would be designed as a, as a solar panel elements that will basically serve for creating an energy for, for our building. Now, the next slide is, is the elevation, looking from the Colorado. This is the south elevation. We have staircases combined with the ADA ramp coming into the building. This is the main entrance. And we were showing on the right, this would be the garage entrance driving down to the lower-level garage. Now, the elevation of the, floor elevation of the museum is, is almost matching with all the other buildings' elevations and the park elevation that is behind us. Now, the, the composition elements that you can see here, they're, they're made of composite panels, metal panels, which is pressed in a, in a different forms. And you can see the windows, you know, narrow windows stretching down vertically to create this rock formation around the scheme. So the scheme is ultimately used to hold the mechanical equipment behind the major structure of the museum and the scheme. This is looking from the east elevation. And I'll get back to this, you know, the wall, integrity of this wall that we were talking about. We'll get back to that in a minute. Now, this is looking from the alley side. Here's the loading area, and there's exits coming out. This is the public elevator accessing to the park level. Those are some renderings and some shots from the Colorado, looking from the, this would be from, you know, east elevator, actually looking from the east, southeast elevation. You can see the staircase leading towards the museum, this glass lobby over here, and openness. And that would be the museum view from the southwest. This is the alley back here. And it, forgot to tell you, we also have a coffee shop, or, you know, which will be opening up towards the Colorado Street. That would be on the ground level as auditorium is. So it also will serve, that coffee shop will serve as a concession stand at the times of auditorium is being used. Now, the, we also placed the green to give you the vision. This is still done at a 30-foot distance here, you know. If you imagine, if you were 15 feet, a green next to your north elevation, 15 feet is just to visualize that, it's where I'm standing and where you are. Just imagine where the steps are going to be and where the green will stand. I mean, architecturally, you need some reading for the, for the elements. You need a space to read these elements. And we thought that, you know, 15 feet is not going to be enough for... So 15 feet of hardscape or... 15 feet of hardscape. Now, this is the entry, main entry from the Colorado. I'll talk about that in a minute. I have some slides to show you. This is main entry from the Colorado Street when you come in. You can see the glazed entry. You can see all the way through the library here, ceremonial staircase, architectural wall will take you up to the second floor. You see a water feature that we have under the, under the covered area. And we're using this area, covered area, part of our museum programming. There will be sculptures, changing exhibition here. So opening up this wall will basically, will defeat the purpose of, of having this area being used by the museum. And it will be very chaotic. We're already allowing the north-south entrance, and this would be the cafeteria, which is opening up towards the Colorado with the, with the glass doors. Here's the auditorium on the first floor. And we're going to the second floor here. This is the rendering, looking at the arrival area of the, of the museum floor. Some interior shots of the museum floor area. This is where we are already on the third floor. This is demonstration kitchen, the way it's going to look, the learning center. Whoops, what happened here? Okay. Now, we have the archives, images of the archives, and the terrace that connects all of those uses together on the third floor. The next slide is a, is a shot of the nighttime. As you can see, all those elements are going to be illuminated by strip lighting, which would be hidden inside of those folds of the elements that are holding the museum itself. So it would be very attractive at night, so, and showing the elements of the landscaping and the water element there. We agreed with the SWA, we had a wall extension, and probably it's your, it's your pockets that you received, wall extension back here, and some green extending this way. So we agreed to open this up. But we're, we're asking minimum of 30 feet down here, because we think it's, you know, especially the elevators that are arriving in this, it would be good to have this hardscape continuously matching with the elevator. Now, I put up two conceptual slides, which you can see, you know, and I, we put the green in here. This is showing the 15 feet, and this is showing 30-feet distance. You can't really tell, you know, the greatness of the green by looking from the, in a bird's eye view. And this is showing the north-south passeo. And if we're saying to be coherent with the rest of accesses here, the north-south passeo is, itself is about 30 feet. You know, and a 30 feet is, is this area here. So that would be more balancing with the north-south passeo and having around a 30-feet area than, you know, bringing this any closer here and allowing the 30 feet on these edges. Yeah. And the next one is showing, you know, aerial shot of the same, like 15 feet, that I was kind of trying to express, that it's distance between here and there. And this is the, the right slide, and the 30 feet is the minimum that we're asking. You can see the elevators in the back. In this situation, you're basically cutting into the elevators, public elevators. Now, this is that passeo. I think another element that we like to, we're kind of, if you look at your report, it says conditions. You know, it's not a recommendation, as was mentioned before. Those are conditions, and we don't want those conditions to affect our Stage Two. We like to hear your direction on it. Because I think this wall is the integral part of this design, architecturally speaking. You know, there could be an explanation or could not be an explanation. But this north-south passeo, I mean, doesn't need to be opened that way, because we do have a programming under the covered area, and we don't want a chaotic entrance. North-south entrance, I think that's good enough to have people moving from north-south, also from the passeo as well. So this is, I believe this is my last slide, if you have any questions. Oh, one more, please. This is the, basically, we took the, the museum section out, and you can see how integrate that wall and basically brings this environment into a plaza, covered plaza situation, where we also softening up this edge with a, with a landscaping all the way through. So that was my last slide. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
That was much faster than...
That was fast, right?
Yes. Thank you. And we have movable questions, I'm sure.
Yeah. Mr., can you go back to your slide 17? Which one? 17, 1-7. If I'm not mistaken, that's slide 17. This one? Yes. So exactly where you have your arrow, that is the top of that wall on the left, on the left. Is that the glass, is that the glass on top of that wall? No, this is open. This is open. The wall itself is about three foot six inches, like the railing height, you know, that, to prevent, because there's also a level difference between here and that walkway passeo. Let me ask my question. Is this the wall that is being asked to be open, or is conditioned to be open? There is no glass on top of the wall? It's open, so there's no glass. It's open? Yes, there's no glass here. All right. It is open. And visually, it's open. And your slide 29, where it shows 15 and 30, the distance, 15 feet and 30 feet? This one? Yeah. That green space, what's the difference in, in square footage in that green space? Shouldn't be that much. We can quickly calculate that. I, I don't have the number, but 15 times... And I think one other thing I wanted to just, just mention, that when you look at in this perspective, look at the 15 feet or the 30 feet, it's not just the width of the walkway, you have to consider the height of the building as well. When, when you have a narrow walkway and you have a tall building... Absolutely. It feels, so the, the one on the side, the walkway from the ARC, that's 30 feet as well? Yes, this is 30 feet. This is recommended to be 30 feet. Now, some of the... Now, some of that could be landscaped, but it is...
No, I understand, but it's 30 feet...
Right, distance.
With, wide, okay. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
I reserve the right for more questions.
Of course you do.
Mr. Garpetin, about 3,000, 3,075 feet. Three, that is that, the difference, 20 by about 205. But, again, remember, it's still open space, all of it. So, we don't lose that in that square.
I understand.
It's just landscape versus hardscape.
Got it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Najarian?
Well, we calculated 2,475.
Well, 205 was the distance across?
What is the distance?
165.
165. 2,475.
I'm sorry, it's 2,400?
475.
Okay. Not 25 on this square difference between hardscape and green space.
Yeah, but a hardscape still, it's an open space.
It's an open, got it.
It's an open space.
Thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
Couple of questions, Mr. Alajajan. So, looking at this diagram, the lower one with the 15-foot wide walking space, would that, at the end of that 15 feet, would that be the end of the building's property, the museum's property, basically, or dimension?
No. The museum property line is 50 feet away from the face of that building, 50 feet into the north. We're depressing the top of the parking structure in order to allow some landscaping to go over that area. It's about seven feet of a depression that we're achieving in that area. Also, I didn't want to emphasize this, but technically, it would be very hard to come any closer to that. So, the line Mr. Garabedian noticed on that 30-foot red line in there, that was indicating the beam line or structural line, how much we're depressing the, you know, the seven-foot deck to allow the landscaping to come over. So, to answer to that, the property line is 50 feet behind...
Okay. So, neither one of these diagrams would properly indicate the exclusive use of the museum? Because your use is even further out, your exclusivity is even further out than the 30...
If I can go back to...
Than the 30-foot.
To this slide here, you can see the property line there on the white area, the paved area, which is hatched with the gray. That is the paving area we're talking about, but...
Okay, orient me for a moment. So, north is...
This is the property line, northern property line.
Okay, that's the north, I see. And the hatched area now indicating brick is a 15-foot or the 30? That's the 30-foot.
That's the 30-foot, yeah.
And the white portion is what? Is that the green space?
Would be grass then.
The green space? Is that all the green space there would be?
Part of the green space.
Part of the green space, okay.
Yeah, the part that is...
The museums exclude...
Yeah, exactly. It's about the museum structure.
Show one more time the property line, I'm sorry.
Let's keep this orderly.
I'm not done yet.
Let's keep this orderly.
So, let me move on if you guys want to follow up. Let's go to that side wall that we're talking about now, if you could show me that. Isn't that a load-bearing wall, though? I mean, does it bear a load? So, how can that be, how would that be removed? I mean, the city says remove that. How could that be removed? You'd at least need the, you know, the support beams.
We have, under discussion, we review this. This maintains the shear. The way the structure is designed is basically sitting on these elements, those walls here and this. And it's a truss frame that, you know, moves up. There are no columns introduced in this area. If we remove any section of this, we must provide some columns and it's just not going to be...
Is there any security purpose to that as well?
It also...
I mean, let's be serious. We know that, we know what this is and what this means to the community and let's not fool ourselves that there are people who would like to see this fail either before or after it's built. So, that would, that's obviously a significant physical barrier to someone slipping in and doing whatever unseen. I think that's a big factor for me. I mean, aside from the architectural thing, I think the security factor is, even though other parts are open, those are limited and contained.
Well, that's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, that's a factor for me.
On both sides, northern and southern sides, which I assume there'll be an entrance into this plaza, the covered plaza, what's, so how is that going to be closed off at nights, for example?
Well, we had discussion with the staff that it will be either roll-down shutters that will close up with the north-south, you know, right here, you know, leaving the green area out, you know, from this point to here, from the ceiling down, and will be same as here, you know, securing the plaza area, basically.
And otherwise, there's glass there?
There's no glass here, this is open.
Completely open?
Yeah.
On both north and south?
Yeah, we are allowing people to walk through this area and, you know, visible, you know, when the museum is on use or you don't need to shut it down, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
I yield my time to...
You know what, before you do that, Mr. Landzepin had something he wanted to put in.
Yeah, before we get too far away, I want to make a clarification. The 50 feet from building is a subterranean parcel where the parking garage would go. My understanding from staff, that at grade would be a city parcel. And so, we're actually looking at city parcel, is that 15 or 30? So, above grade would be the cities, below grade would be what we're leasing to the museum to build the parking garage.
Okay. All right, I got you.
Okay. Mr. Devine?
So, my question about the wall is the fact that if, you say it's load-bearing, that wall?
Yes.
It's load-bearing.
Yeah.
Why doesn't it show up in any of these other configurations, like on this mass and context?
Well, these pictures are taken from the south. It appears to be on the east side. The wall, that wall is on the east side. It, well, here it is.
Has it appeared before in any of our...
Yes, in all of our presentation. That was the integral part of my design from day one.
Yes, darling.
Sorry, if I just make the clarification. This is the first time you are officially seen that although the museum has been great about the outreach and they have shown versions, this is the first, I think, opportunity at the stage one for the council to view this. So, you would be seeing some of these specifics and those are very thoughtful questions and this is appropriate for this first submittal.
Right, yeah, we agree.
Okay, so this wall has been there since, from the beginning, we just haven't seen it. Because it seems to me that it's separating the ARC and the area to the, what's, is that the east, north-south?
Yeah, east of it.
To the east. It's kind of putting up a wall that's separating it and this is supposed to be an integrated block, an integrated area, and it seems to me that that's separating instead of integrating. And as I say, I've never, I haven't seen that before, so I question that.
Yeah. Can I answer that? I think the ARC level is about seven and a half feet below. You're not really achieving horizontal connection because we're, with SWA, we had a discussion and we're raising this 30 feet that continuously north-south parcel. And you can see the steps coming down here. Can you see it? So, that would be the level of this plaza. So, when you're here, I mean, you don't really directly go to here. You have to come around and go up or go up here and come down and then go up here if you want to enter there. Besides, we have foot and a half to two feet difference between the parcel and the plaza level, our covered plaza level. So, that creates additional steps to be created. Yeah, four or five steps to be created. So, we think that, you know, it's not necessary to open this up since we have opened all the way around. We purposely opened the ground floor for everyone, you know, just, you know, this structural piece, this connection, you know, makes an architectural sense and it makes a structural sense, too.
Well, it just seems like to me that if you enter the property, the steps between ARC and the museum and you're walking up and you're walking against a wall...
Now, really, we're going to have landscaping, you know, soften this edge. This is about three foot, three and a half feet from this side and you can come in from here.
Isn't that 45 feet at one end?
I'm sorry?
45 feet at one end? How tall is it at the highest point?
Oh, the wall?
Yes.
The 45 inches. It's like this, it's a railing height. This, the shorter side up to here, halfway is 45, then it starts raising, 45 inches.
At the highest point of the wall, how tall is it?
Highest point is about 16 feet. This is 16 feet, but that's how you hold the structure.
So, I was going to say that, I mean...
You can't get rid of that if you want.
This building can't float. I mean, the building can't float. It has to sit on something, there has to be something retaining it. It has to be a wall.
What are the other sides sitting on?
That's why they have two walls retaining the building. You can't take out any side of the walls anymore.
And the other side is holding these elements, the staircase and bearing walls that are coming up. You can see those elements.
I mean, there has to be a wall on that side, the east or south or northeast, southeast. There has to be a retaining wall somewhere there.
This also reflects the museum floor plan on the second floor. We want to make it as open as possible so it will be easily programmable for the changing museums, you know, if, changing exhibitions. If we have any columns there, it's going to create a hardship for, to program that area.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Yeah.
So, a limited entrance, is there, is it possible to open a, an entrance in that wall? And what are the problems that that poses? I understand the wall has to be there, some type of a wall has to be there.
Yeah.
I think that what staff is saying is, but there should be access from the...
Well, I think the limited entrance would be like, looking like a fake entry to me.
Okay, so what you're saying, it would ruin the integrity, the architectural integrity of the building?
Yeah, it will destruct the architectural integrity because what we like to see, we like to see this massing supported by two elements, nothing more than that, which is necessity. You know, one is the far wall that is here, the other one is the major massing of that auditorium that supports this element.
Yes.
You know, any breaking of any point that's going to, you know, basically destruct the composition of the architecture.
Mr. Garpetin?
Just want to understand it one more time, just the same question. The floor, the level of ARC is seven feet lower than the parcel, the walkway, the 30-foot wide walkway.
Not the floor, the plaza level. So, if you're trying to get from ARC to a museum...
Right.
Going down to this would be seven feet below this, but coming straight down, you know, you can, you know, where the building is, you can basically walk in here. You don't have to come through here and do this.
The plaza of ARC is seven feet below...
It's lower, yeah.
I'm sorry. It's lower, seven feet lower than the museum. And you have staircase on the northern side, on the southern side...
Southern side.
To go up. If there is an opening, you have to go around, right? To come up these steps, go to that walkway, which is 30 feet wide, and then enter the museum area, the plaza area of the museum. So, if you want to go around on Colorado and enter from the southern part, you can do that as well if you want.
Yeah, you can come through here, you can come through here.
And that 45 inches that you mentioned, the lowest part of that wall, what's above it?
What's above it? Nothing, it's open, it's visually open.
So, that's open, but how are you going to secure that at night? Because if people want to get in from that side, how would that be secured?
Well, on a 45 inches, add another feet and a half to two feet here, that's quite a bit of a height, you know, so we...
Right.
Yeah.
So, you...
We're not expecting anybody to jump over it. It could be, you know?
Let me, you'd be surprised, so, but something to think about.
Maybe we should make it higher.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Alajajan?
Are you saying that wall is load-bearing wall?
Yes.
Well, this elements are load-bearing and there's a great beam connection here on a surface-type great beam. It's connecting from this point to that point. So, this is continuous great beam, very heavy beam.
Do you have a section showing that?
Not on the slides, but on a face two, we can do that.
Okay, that wall, where it stops?
Which one? This one? It stops here.
No, no, go deep, where it goes.
It goes all the way to the basement. It's continuously...
All the way to the basement.
Yes, it's a part of the continuation of my garage floor plan. Garage wall continues in becoming that support element.
So, on that level, do you have beam to go from this side, which is...
Yes, we have trusses.
East to west?
Right, we have trusses.
Where did you show it?
No, I mean, I'm not showing the structure. This is cut below the ceiling. So, the beams would be hidden into the ceiling area, which would be, they're trusses, they're not steel beams or anything like that, yeah. Just imagine trusses running from this end to here, from this point to this point. And then you have a truss running from this point to here, and then you have those two elements running truss all the way through. And then, there's an intermediate truss, which is spanning this direction and this direction. There are like four or five trusses supporting this elements.
See, but you are, your truss is at the end of the property where, you start at the end of property, right?
Yeah, I start here and end up here.
Then what, you're showing the black, what you're showing there?
Oh, this is cut, this is cut through section. You're seeing the wall, image of the wall, cut wall, you know, the black areas are showing in the plan format. It's a bit of a complicated section.
The south of that green area I'm asking.
This area?
No.
This?
Maybe, I'm sorry.
I need a microphone. Hold on, hold on, Charlie. Hold on, chief.
Hold on, ready?
Yes.
This one?
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Hold on.
It's on.
In relation to the truss, how this, what you're showing there?
Well, that's an ADA ramp, that's an extension of the parking deck that allows the ADA access to the plaza area. You know, if I may approach to...
So, your trusses are here, you said?
There's one truss here, another truss there, another truss here and one truss here. And then intermediate truss is moving this way. Everything else is open on the floor. So, those trusses are supporting the entire truss.
What it shows here again, what is this?
This is deck.
Oh, it's raised from this, it's raised?
This allows the parking to go under the deck.
Under, okay. Can you show me the, can you show me the separation between city property and museum property?
Oh, on the plan format?
In plan format, okay.
Yes, one second, okay. We have it one here. Well, the city property continues out there. Let me see if I have a site plan that illustrates that. If not, then SWA's drawing is the best to show you that. I think they had that in there. Yeah, here it is. You can see, this is the assumed property line where the parking structure is under this area. Now, the city's library is here, you can see the dark line there. This is where you see the asphalt parking from the survey. So, our parking structure stops at this point. Right, there is a concrete wall, if you've been in the park, right at that concrete wall.
Okay, that's on...
Above that would be, this area on the garage would be depressed to allow landscaping to come over.
Okay, so that's what you want, 15 or 35 on that top level?
Well, we want this area to be maintained 30 feet. This area, it's already depressed and given to the park, so that would be part of the park above the garage.
So, my question is, so I think what you're trying, what you're trying to ask and I would like to ask, didn't, Mr. Landzepin, didn't you say that the city property ends, not at that line, that he has the arrow, but further in?
At grade, at grade, that's correct.
At, at grade, at grade, that's correct. We're going to have, we'll have two parcels. It's a, it's a three D parcel map, if you can imagine. At grade, this would be the city's parcel, and we will carve a parcel underneath, underground, that the, the, uh, museum will lease from us. That line there is underground. That is that underground parcel. That area.
So that is the.
Above, where he said that he's giving it over to GRAS for the library. That's above grade, or at grade. That will be city, a city parcel.
City property. So if we extend that out thirty feet, then we are taking away park space from our property or not?
Well. I, I would say that the property line, um, it's important, and I would say that you leave it where it is, with fifteen feet or thirty feet. But you would be taking away green space if you come out with hardscape.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm asking.
Correct. But I, I think that we would want to hold the line. I would recommend you hold the line on what's the city parcel at, at that, at whatever the number, I'd, the staff can tell you exactly. But we design it with the library in mind, uh, with the museum in mind. So we might own fifteen feet of hardscape, or we might own thirty feet of hardscape.
Can, how can we compromise with twenty feet so that we're not taking away park space? I mean, I'm looking for.
I don't, I don't know that it's with the baby kind of situation. I think, on the one hand, on the one hand is, is the, the interest of having green space. Although, you know, our parks have hardscape space too. It's not like something's hardscape is no longer park space, it's no longer open space. Having, you know, they're not mutually exclusive of each other. On the other hand, it's, I think, what the museum is presenting is the ability to have a sort of a meaningful, um, entry or, 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 you know, sort of a, uh, an entree to the, to the plaza, which makes sense. If you go to any museum, the museums don't usually start at the door. They have some, some, again, some depth to them outside of the museum. But splitting the baby saying, you know, it's like, well, the, the difference between fifteen and thirty is, it's not twenty, by the way. But, you know, let's say in this case it's twenty, um, it just, I don't know that it's the right way to do it.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of the green space and, you know, we, they said we were going to have a larger park and we want as much green space as we can. And, and now it's from, going from fifteen to thirty-five, and I, I just have an issue with that. Go ahead, Mr. Lanspain. Convince me.
Mr. Lanspain? If you, if you'd like, um, we can ask Gerdo to give you some rationale behind that, um, and then you can weigh both of those, or if.
Rationale behind the green space?
Behind the, the fifteen feet and the wall, uh, on the east side.
Sure, he can give it. If, if he's, is he also the right person to explain to us the, this overarching necessity for an entrance from ARC to, to the museum?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a suggestion before.
Before he speaks or after?
Yes, because it is related maybe. I was going to suggest we leave that issue for a later time. Is that possible? Not to decide that this second?
We, we would really like to know so that, that the architect can finish his design, and we're, we're trying to get all of this back to you in June um, to meet a, a financing deadline. Um, and it, it's time to make that decision so that we can finish the design of the park block for you and the architect can finish, uh, the museum, and they come together at one time.
My suggestion was if we could leave that issue for a later.
I think it's, they're, they're, I think they said that in the beginning too. They, they're really looking for direction, both the architect and staff, so that they know, I mean, they need to finalize this at some point. But why don't we hold that thought also until we hear from Mr. Gordo and Gorda, Gerda, I'm sorry, and, um, let's have some answers. You know what the questions are, right? Why the fifteen, why not thirty?
Convince me.
And why don't think he's going to convince you? He's gonna, it's, it's the museum people, folks that are going to convince you, but also the entrance and the, the entry, the access from ARC to, to the museum.
Yes, I, I have a very simple explanation for all of these issues.
And as he's going to the slides, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the, the, one thing I will say is, is the fact that, um, this is a large project that is before you and a big decision that's before you. That's very exciting for the community. And the two items that you're discussing as it relates to the design, um, and connectivity are, are not that, um, large in terms of the entire project. And we have so many points that we have agreed on, um, with the museum committee, and, and I think that's important because the staff and the committee have worked so hard and diligently together to be before you. And these two issues were the two items that we couldn't come to a conclusion on. Um, but again, not earth-shattering items, but items where we'd like your direction in terms of what your vision is. At the end of the day, for us to be able to move forward. And either, either way we, we land, I think, it works out for, for all parties.
Just a matter of which one's the best option, otherwise you're, you're right. I mean.
Right, and, um, you know, for me, I, so I've worked on projects like this across the United States, and the number one failing of urban spaces is when buildings don't embrace the public realm. And that means buildings are in an urban context. It's an urban experience. People are walking around. They feel safe. They can see each other. They can access different sides of the building. And so we're just trying to be a champion for an active public realm. So I'll go through these points very quickly. So this was the diagram we showed on December fifth, and you'll notice that we had shown the building thirty feet from Colorado Street, right? This is December fifth, thirty feet from the curb to the face of building. You'll see today it's forty-five feet, so we've already given in. We've already given an additional fifteen feet, uh, for the building to move into the central open space. It's already taking, uh, space away from the central open space. So we've already reduced by moving the building. So that's, that's number one. We've already kind of given space, uh, to the building to move into that central open space.
But I think you have to kind of contextualize that comment as well. The reason why it was moved, um, is because of the parking, I believe, but maybe you can explain that piece of it.
Sure, the, the reason why it was moved, because we are sensitive to how people enter the building, and there is a grade change there that incorporates stairs, steps. Really grand, beautiful steps, but also an accessible, uh, walkway, five percent accessible walkway, which I think is great. Universal design is really important. And so that justified us embracing this forty-five foot setback from the curb to the face of building, and, and we agree with that. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll kind of get to the other side of, of the north side of the building, but I wanted to, uh, talk about the, um, the pasero. So, uh, the thirty feet that was mentioned, the pathway, the north-south pasero, that's, thirty feet is actually, uh, face of building to face of building. That's the distance from the museum to the ARC. Our pathway that we're proposing for the north-south pasero is really only ten to twelve feet.
Is that that green area?
That's, uh, right, that green strip right here. So we're not, we're not proposing, we never proposed a thirty-foot wide walkway. We've been saying that it's thirty feet from the face of the museum to the face of the ARC building, thirty feet. The walkway would be a lot less than that. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, what, what would be the rest of it? I mean, it's thirty feet right now.
It would be landscape, uh, on the ARC side. Again, trying to create a, a path that feels urban and accessible. I have a diagram that, that I did, uh, that I can show you to, um, help, uh, illustrate. Let's see, I think it's in here. Is it in here?
So that leaves me, let, can I ask one question? He talked about the, um, architect talked about, uh, landscaping on the wall. Would that tech, be in, coming into the area of that walkway?
The landscape would fall within our scope.
The ten feet?
The, the thirty feet zone of the north-south.
But I mean, no, I'm talking about the ten-foot walkway that you have as the path.
Yes, yes.
Is the landscaping for that wall going to be encroaching into that walkway, making it any narrower?
That landscape would be designed by us. We would decide what that landscape is, i- if it in fact even exists there.
So it could be a thirty-foot wide walkway?
Right, it falls within the scope of SWA to determine, uh, where that landscape is within that, uh, thirty-foot wide zone. But let me, uh, let me jump to this really quick because I, I think this will be helpful. Uh, so I did this, uh, can, can this go to full screen? Sorry. So I did these sketches very quickly to help illustrate, uh, what we're talking about. So the top left is a little bird's eye that I sketched over top of, uh, of Arm's beautiful building. And, uh, the bottom right is an elevation drawing, and it illustrates the, the current design in a sketchy format, right? So you can see the, the, the wall in orange, um, and how it doesn't really allow access through, it's closed. Um, there is a grade change there, but it doesn't allow that kind of urban, accessible kind of experience. And you're essentially walking between two walls. ARC is seven feet below, as was pointed out, and then the museum also has a wall. So in terms of safety, I'm not sure you, you know, you might feel, I mean, it's a long distance. Do you walk there at night? How do you feel about it, or even during the daytime? And so this shows, uh, the proposal. So what we're proposing is that the grade change is, is corrected. We would actually propose a sloping walkway that takes you up higher, and we would bring the grade up to a higher point right here so that you would only have maybe four steps to access that plaza level of the museum. It'd be beautiful. Um, you know, I'm not a structural engineer, but I know architects can do amazing things with buildings.
Quick question before we move forward.
Yes.
The elevation difference between the plaza of ARC, that you want to have this slope walkway, to the plaza of the museum is almost eight, eight and a half feet, right?
So the, uh, there is a grade change, yes, between the courtyard of the ARC building and the walkway, and that may change. That may change in the future.
If you want to build a ramp to go up to where the museum is, and then have only two or three steps to get to the floor of the plaza of the museum, you're going to have a very steep ramp.
We have, we worked it out in an AutoCAD drawing, and we, there's an existing tree in that location where you see that triangle. And we would actually work a beautiful walkway around that oak tree to get it up higher, five percent, universal design. Um, and then you would, we would make up the steps, uh, here. So by the time you got up to that higher point, you're actually reducing the elevation between the walkway and the museum plaza level.
Yeah, but within thirty feet, you want to go from zero to eight feet.
Yes.
Because the, the elevation, I mean, the width of the, the walkway is thirty feet.
No, the walk, walkway is only ten feet wide.
No, I mean, the ten, thirty-foot area, you have thirty-foot area between the ARC building and the, and the museum building, right?
We actually have more space there. We have like sixty feet. There's a, there's an existing oak tree there and an existing, uh, landscaped area that has no buildings or no parking lot. Uh, the closest building.
From the plaza of the ARC.
It's, uh, it's kind of a landscaped area adjacent to the ARC and.
That's a, okay, that's the plaza of the ARC. So from there, you want to have a small walkway to go around and go up. Is it to bring people from ARC into the museum or?
It's to bring people who are walking along Colorado Street, and they want to meander into, uh, the Central Park, or they, they see something interesting happening in the museum, like, hey, let's go check it out. And they go up these wonderful steps into a plaza, and that's urban. Uh, that's a public realm, you know? People are able to walk around and check things out, and it's accessible, and it feels safe. People might end up sitting at those steps for people watching. Could be a wonderful, uh, kind of experience. And th- these are just kind of simple illustrations, obviously.
Yeah, since this is not to the scale, I'm having a hard time visualizing. I'm pretty good in visualizing things.
Right.
But the elevation difference between, you know, that plaza, the ARC's plaza area to the museum, the plaza area is like seven to eight feet. How far back you have to go to have a walkway? I, I'm not saying it won't, it can't be done, but what I'm saying is, I, I, I'm having a hard time visualizing where is it going to come and how's it going to end up up there, so.
If you're at the ARC, you would enter into that, uh, north-south pasero via an existing stair. There's a stair that takes you up, uh, to that level. Uh, this would be an enhancement, uh, to what, uh, would currently exist. Very, very quickly, I just want to also jump to this, and, and maybe we can come back to that other diagram, but I, I'd, I'd be remiss not to talk about some of the technical aspects. So, um, this is a section also I drew before this meeting because I know these issues are important. And so you can see here, uh, this was drawn at eighth inch equals a foot. It was drawn over the top of the, uh, ARAM's architectural sections. And, uh, you can see in orange is kind of this void space of his building. The face of the museum is kind of pointed there. There's a note says museum. Uh, I drew fifteen feet, uh, to basically around the center of the elevator. Uh, but you can see that there's actually plaza to the left of that dashed pink line. You know, there's more open space visually. Um, and so you can see the, the green line here, this line here, this is what, uh, we desire as kind of that large, open space figure. You know, that the open space could be lawn, it could be green. We have seven feet, as was pointed out by ARAM, which is great for trees, and you can see the tree planting in that soil space. But, uh, again, if you keep moving this pink line further and further, uh, north towards the library, your, your central space will, you know, it'll become smaller percentage-wise. Um, and, and again, we're just trying to find a way to keep that figure as large as possible from that December fifth meeting and from the consequent, uh, outreach meetings that we've had with the public.
Okay, thank you.
Can you go back to the drawing?
Yes.
That one. Now, the bottom right shows a, um, a carve-out in the wall so that people can actually see through, uh, into the entry or the plaza of the museum. And as they walk by, it's all open and.
The, the suggestion would, the suggestion would be that if we can bring the grade up, uh, we can propose possibly steps there where people can walk up. Maybe it's a few steps. I'm not sure how many, but, um, when ARAM talked about security, I would imagine at nighttime even this would have the roll-up gates. So you'd have roll-up gates on three sides. But in the daytime, imagine how wonderful that would be. To be able to walk seamlessly from one building to another, library to museum, museum to Colorado Street, um, and then the potential for all of it to feel like a campus. I, I think that'd be absolutely wonderful.
Well, it seems to me that that would give it a, the, um, the feeling of connectivity and integration, and I think that's what it's all about. And I know that, and I, I, you know, I want to, uh, cite a, a letter that we got from, uh, uh, I think it was, uh, let's see, it's Berge Carpetian. And he said in his letter that they were happy to be at this site because it's an opportunity to reimagine the entire block to better integrate its civic, cultural, and senior facilities. And how better to do it than with an opening there that just opens the whole plaza, the whole block, the Central Park to everyone and everything.
So let me ask you, let me ask you a question. So why have an entrance on the, uh, eastern side of the building only? Let's have an entrance on the western side of the building too. I mean, there's, I'm sure there's something that the museum can connect to there, Masonic Temple or something.
Your microphone.
Sorry, did you hear my question? I'll, I'll repeat it.
I did, no.
Why limit the side entry only to the ARC and not expand further and, and have an opening on the, on the western side of the building? Because the Masonic Temple is there, it's closer to the Americana, there's a lot of foot traffic on that side. I mean, you, you can keep, I guess, altering the architectural integrity of a building as much as you want, but then you don't really have the architectural integrity anymore, so, I mean, it's kind of.
No, it's a, it's a good question, and, and with all buildings, there's always one side that needs service, uh, and needs some areas in which to have certain kinds of programs that maybe aren't ideal for pedestrian access. Uh, that side is on the alleyway. There's parking, uh, adjacent to that area. We do have a public sidewalk there. But the east side, just, uh, urbanistically, the connection to other buildings, the ARC, uh, has just the potential to be a little bit more open.
Okay.
Uh, and that's really the, the argument.
Okay, okay. Do you have a question?
Yes, I. So I'm looking at this options that we have between east-west market walk. If you can go back to those slides, I would really appreciate it. Yes, and the garden plaza, right? There are two, the center one is garden plaza, okay. If you look at the, the east-west market walk, basically the, the way it's designed, you're doing the same thing on the library side. You're building a, a, a concrete walkway, which eats up into that greens, green space. Also, on the, on the garden plaza one, it's even wider because it has the steps, it has a stage, and it has another walkway. So that green space is being squeezed, if you will, because of, but the open space stays the same. That's the key, I think, that the open space stays the same. You have hardscape versus landscape or green space. So that, that garden plaza, how, how wide is that area with the stage and the stairs and walkway in front of the stairs? I think we're doing, designing this thing some, maybe, uh, I don't want to say one side, one way more, one side more than the other, trying to bring the green all the way up to the museum. But on the other, on the, on the other side, you have the walkways, you have a stage, you have stairs and sitting area, coffee area, table area. There's no, nothing on this side, in this, in this, uh, in this, uh, designs.
No, that's a good observation, and, and part of the discussion we've had with the museum architects and ARAM is, is their desire. to not have too much activity along this edge. And looking at all four sides of that green square, in terms of what is the right response, what is the right programming? The library, they're kind of squeezed in there too, because essentially, once you get past that little bump right there, I mean, this is all public realm. There's going to be tons of people hanging out on steps, and there's going to be a stage. And, I mean, all of these kind of show different activities. Even the market walk, really, that's public realm, hundred percent. The library has that, you know, that sliver right there where it's their landing, it's their entry to the library. But, you know, you can imagine market stalls filling up that space. And again, you know, we did have a dialogue with Aram in terms of trying to keep this edge clean and simple and-
And I think that's what they're doing with having a walkway only on that side, right? I mean, is that, am I correct? On the museum side, having a walkway-
It is clean and simple. The east side is clean and simple, I give you that. But in terms of public access, it's a little bit, well, it's not possible with the current design.
Public, no, I'm talking about the north side, where it faces the-
The north side is open, sure.
Right, it's instead of, they have a walkway on the north side, right? So, it's a fifteen feet versus thirty feet or thirty-five feet. So, you have the same, basically have the mirror image what you have on the library side, on the museum side. It's not shown in this designs, but basically, that's what it is. And when we did, redid, we remodeled the library, we did not open up on all four sides. All we did, we closed one side, we opened up the north side, more inviting, same concept steps. There was supposed to be a coffee cart or a coffee shop with sitting area outside, it would never happen. And the rear portion is the same, it has limited access. So, it's not that we opened up the whole thing for people to come in from all angles. You see what I'm saying?
I do, I understand.
This is basically the same concept as the library. They have two accesses, a lot more open, north and south side.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so let's do this.
Are there cards from the public?
There are cards, and I'm trying, we're trying to get them, but we haven't yet. But I do want to give Aram Aladzhan a chance to, did you hear anything that you want to respond to?
Yeah. We agree and disagree here. But let me tell you that for us, from the planning standpoint of view, you know, when, even more if it's a ten-foot walkway, this, we're not creating a Champs-Elysees there that, you know, you want to have an entrance coming. And we don't have an entrance from the east side. My glass doors are southern and north. Why would the people go into ten-feet walkway if you have a fifty-feet walkway to go through it from north-south? That's my question. You know, so, it's purely architectural philosophy to have that wall to be integrated as one element where the major mass of the museum is landing. That is the solution for that. Now, north-south side and a northern side, I think it's a chance to have that thirty feet, because you visually, being fifteen feet, again, it's being like where you are and where I am. Well, that's where the grass starts. I mean, space of reading the elements of architecture. Architecture is like a sculpture. You know, if you come too close to the element, you will not see it. You want that space to be read. And that space is going to provide adequate passageway, or coming out from the elevator, the people that could access through the stairs, that thirty feet will secure, that's a minimum, that's a minimum given. And we're not trying to hurt the landscaping, we agreed on the creation of the landscaping. But why can't it move closer? If you look at the garden plaza, closer to the building, similar to, you know, other concepts, it can. You know, I mean, you can expand the green space and design around it, as far as the planning is concerned, any which way. And, you know, there was one concept with green was expanding east-west direction, which is continuation of that. And it would probably be ideal to have the stage at the east side. Yeah, we like this most, that we think that would give more assembling area, you know, east-west direction, where you have a stage sitting between the library and the ARC building. That will activate that entire area. This is a good approach to it. I think we should concentrate to that. Yeah, thank you, if you have any questions, I don't want to-
Sure.
If you are going to weigh in on the fifteen-foot or thirty-foot, I would like to emphasize that when we had met with Aram, if there are steps, that they happen right at the face of building. Okay?
Okay.
So that, because if you, you know, there's a big difference there.
I understand.
If the steps are out in the park, and then the park drops-
You're disrupting the park as opposed to-
Yes, yes, I just want to clarify that.
So, the cantilever part of the building, the stairs are on the cantilever part of the building?
Within, right.
Within the building envelope.
Are there, do you foresee there being steps there?
No steps are inside.
On the northern end, on the front, front or back, I guess that's the front.
Yeah, the stairs is under the canopy of the building.
Okay.
And moreover, this, the area that Ms. Dwyane was asking, that area is going to fall under the building canopy, that five feet near the wall. And we have to landscape that. I know that they're designing it, but we're suggesting a landscaping in that area, you know, continuously, you know, I don't want to go back to my slide. But because of the canopy projecting out, that's where our property line is. And it's five feet away from that face of the wall.
Okay, thank you. So, let's, for a little bit, no more back and forths, let's hear from our residents and our guests. First speaker is Phyllis Kim. And, Phyllis, two minutes, okay? Great. Followed by Arda Chakian.
Thank you so much for your amazing work. I just wanted to say thank you, and my heart is really filled with emotion and gratitude for the great work Armenian-American community in Glendale has been doing, and the city council has been doing to bring this amazing project to Glendale. It reminds me of myself speaking five years ago here, when we brought the Peace Monument to Glendale. And there were, you know, this room was filled with the deniers, the history deniers, who came one after another. And we felt we were overpowered by those denier speakers. But then, city of Glendale, city council members, including our mayor Sinanian and the city council member Najarian, who were the city council members at the time, stood very strong, the whole council really stood behind the victims of the human rights violations. And we had the victory over the lawsuit against the city. So, Korean-American community really are happy. And we are here to, you know, work with you, and we support one hundred percent for the success of the Armenian-American museum in Glendale. So, I just wanted to say that. And we are working with the Korean-American Federation of L.A. And the president wants to also, to convey the message of support and cooperation in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Phyllis. And that day, five years ago, was a victory for all of Glendale and all of its residents.
Yes, yes. And the Glendale Armenian-American community stood very strong with us at the time and since then. So, it is our turn now to support this work.
Wonderful. Thank you, Phyllis. Arda Chakian, followed by Violet Lecker, Licker, I'm sorry, if I mispronounced that name.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. My name is Arda Chakian. I am here on behalf of Senator Anthony Portantino, who hoped to be here for the museum discussion, but is in Sacramento. Senator Portantino would like to compliment the museum board, city council, city staff, and community for working so diligently and collaboratively for such an exciting project. Many people have put in countless hours to create a design that will add to the cultural and educational experience in Glendale. Senator Portantino would also like to compliment Zavin Kazazian for his very eloquent presentation to the state senate budget committee on behalf of state funding, and Governor Brown for supporting the three million dollar request. This is truly an exciting day for Glendale and the region, and it is appropriate for the hearing to be taking place in April. Though not Armenian, the senator has tried to grasp the pride, culture, and tears the Armenian community is sharing with all of us tonight. The senator is ready to aid this effort in whatever capacity the council and museum board sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, since the senator is too modest to thank himself, I guess he can't do that. I want to thank him for being a champion of the museum and really authoring, being the originator or the cause for the three million dollar allocation by the governor, by the state of California. So, we thank him for it. Thank you. Next speaker is Violet, you're going to correct me.
Violet Coker.
Coker, I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Violet Coker, public affairs representative for the carpenters contractors cooperation committee. This is a very exciting and important project for the city of Glendale, and especially the Armenian-American community. And we'd just like to say, it's great to see that prevailing wages are specified in the lease terms. And also, given the high prevalence of law-breaking contractors working in the city, we'd be more than happy to share information as this project moves forward, just to ensure that this important museum is built in the utmost integrity and with the best quality work that can be provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Fullerton Pacific will not be part of this project, actually.
Good to know.
I say that name every time, because apparently, there's been a history of labor law violations by this one entity, and the carpenters are very adamant about this, so we hear you, loud and clear. Thank you. Albert Hoffman, followed by Victoria Dorchovian.
Good evening, mayor and council members. First of all, congratulations, mayor, on your reappointment as mayor. I think you've taken over a much more professional organization than you did last time. But you're facing a lot of problems in the city, so you've got a lot of work to do. I got involved with the museum when I was on the bond oversight committee at Glendale College. And the college got all excited and worked up over the loss of the parking lot where the museum was originally planned. And so, while I was working this whole issue, I went around the city trying to find a place where we could, might be able to put this museum. And I ran across just south of the Armenian Apostolic Church down here on the central, it's not that far from the town center. And I looked at the old houses and everything in there, and I said, wow, this would be great. This is where the museum should be, be by the church, there's an Armenian youth facility down there. It'd be a fantastic location for this museum. I've been to a lot of museums in Europe, and a configuration like this in Central Park is just not ideal for going to a museum. And you're going to need a lot of support facilities. And I look at all the rental places that are available between the church down there and up to the town center. I could see this whole thing eventually being support of this museum. And it'd be so much better if the museum, that would be totally private, operating within itself. It wouldn't have to worry about all these city rules and regulations and traffic and everything else. And it's going to be a busy place. You're going to get worldwide attention. Another thing is, we could finally put in a trolley from the Larizarian Transportation Center, because this museum will get attention worldwide. There'll be visitors coming with families. And the facility down there would be just a great place to have the museum. I wrote this to the council over two years ago, and as usual, the city council doesn't really pay attention to public input.
Sure we do.
They seem to think they know more than we do. I'm an eighty-year-old native of this, and I've been in the ARP for twenty-five years as a Republican, and I've never noticed any problem politically with the ARP. I'm not sure what you were talking about, Brett.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
But I really think this would be a much better facility down there. It would be their facility, and they could, it would just be amazing what they could do down there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Dorchovian, followed by Berj Karapetian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Victoria Dorchovian, and I am a field representative for Assembly Member Laura Friedman. Glendale and the greater Los Angeles region are home to the largest population of Armenians outside of Armenia. And Ms. Friedman believes that Glendale is the perfect place for the museum, which will embrace the rich diversity of the Armenian community, and educate and empower all who step through its doors. Assembly Member Friedman has supported this project from its beginning, and continues to strongly support this exciting project, and has worked with her colleagues in Sacramento to preserve state funding for the museum and the state budget. The museum and cultural center will attract many constituents from California and other states, while helping deepen the understanding of Armenian culture and history. The design concept includes a theater and classroom, which will make the museum a wonderful place for many to host cultural and educational events. With the hundred and third anniversary of the Armenian genocide fast approaching, this project is a testament of California's support of the Armenian-American community in California. Ms. Friedman thanks the council, city staff, and the museum board on their hard work, and the city of Glendale's continued support of the Armenian-American museum and cultural center of California. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Victoria. And thank you to the assembly member. Berj Karapetian, followed by Hasmik Burushen.
Since I'm speaking on behalf of the museum, can I go last?
If you so desire, sure. Hasmik Burushen, she's left. Very well. Then we have Angela Barsarian. Angela Barsarian, Mr. Karapetian, you're the last one, come on.
Mayor Sinanian, city council members, city staff, city manager, and community members. I am proud to serve as the chairman of the Armenian-American Museums Executive Committee. First, I would like to thank our Glendale City Council and City Manager Yasmin Beers for sharing our vision to build a cultural and educational center in the heart of downtown Glendale that will be the pride of our jewel city. I would also like to thank our city staff, and in particular Darlene Sanchez, Mark Berry, and Phil Landsafame, for their collaboration and support that has helped us reach this historic milestone this evening. Our governing board members are here, and some, two of our co-chairs are here with us. And we are here to indicate, to convey the mission of the museum. The mission is to promote understanding and appreciation of America's ethnic and cultural diversity by sharing the Armenian-American experience. This vision is a cultural campus that enriches the community, educates the public on the Armenian-American story, and empowers individuals to embrace cultural diversity and speak out against prejudice, as we heard earlier speaker tell you about. The museum program will feature a permanent exhibition on the Armenian-American experience, telling the history of the Armenia, including the Armenian genocide, and the story of Armenians living in America. The museum will feature traveling exhibitions on diverse cultures and subject matters that will be engaged broad audiences, that will engage broad audiences, and serve as a bridge that connects our multicultural community. The museum will be a place for all Glendale residents to visit, enjoy, and celebrate. The inside of the museum, the covered plaza, as well as the outdoor area. All of the diverse cultures that make our wonderful multicultural community will come there to celebrate and enjoy the facilities. The museum will be a place for our youth to connect with their roots and discover who they are. The Armenian Museum would like to let you know that in the last two and a half weeks, we have already received seven thousand petitions in support of the proposed design and the proposed location and the program. We have conveyed to you that we accept the proposed business terms, but do not understand the logic and the insistence of opening a wall or limiting it to fifteen-feet distance where the grass starts. We do not understand it. We believe the onus is on the entity that is hired by you, is your consultant, to justify why that is better. Our impression of what the public said at those community outreaches was very different than what they have gotten. Community didn't say, limit it to fifteen feet. So, I don't know why they're insisting on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Karapetian. And unless there are questions for staff, I'm going to close this public hearing. Okay? Hearing's closed, and we'll start with deliberations. Who'd like to go first? I'll go first. Mr. Najarian.
Well, I think we're very far along the road for consensus. Well, I think we're very far along the road for consensus on many issues. So the issues before us are approving the Central Park Block master concept design. And if I'm not mistaken, these are the three different concepts we have in front of us. The grand, what were the names again? The grand plaza, the walk, and all that. The one I like the best, and maybe we can put, we can put those up there because I think we'll all be maybe touching on those. I like the one that does give the greatest amount of green space. I think that was number three. That had the stage on the east side. And yeah, I believe that's the one. So I like the grand steps for the main reason that it does provide a greater uninterrupted green space. And it would be more conducive for some concerts with the stage in that direction. And the green space does bump up a little bit closer to the library than some of the other options. So I'm in favor of that. I approve the Central Park Block master concept design. I do appreciate the work by SWA. When I heard that they were involved in the Santana Row Project in San Jose, which I've been visiting a lot lately, I was truly impressed. If anyone wants to see great public design, go to Santana Row in San Jose and the Silicon Valley. So I'm very good with that. As far as the deal points and the lease negotiations, I think we're all on the same page. Staff and, staff and the museum folks are all on the same page. So that's an easy one. The one, though, that we've been talking about for a long time has the two components. One is, do we permit the extra 15 feet for a total of 30 feet of hardscape in front of the museum? And number two, do we permit the wall to be a solid wall along the east side? And I told, it's funny, I told staff today, staff is gonna kill me. I said, you know what, 15 feet is enough, and we need as much green space as possible. And I said, that wall, you know, doesn't have to be a wall, it's gonna be, you know, exclusive, and it's gonna be very exclusionary. But after hearing the discussion and looking at the schematics, I think... So for number one, if we go to the grand steps, I don't have a problem of bumping out that extra 15 feet of hardscape. I think there'll be plenty of green space. People will use that hardscape, perhaps even to a greater extent than they would the grass. And I don't think it'll be an imposition. And number two, the wall, I think because the building itself has such grand and wide entrances on the south side and on the north side, I don't think we really need that extra opening on the east. I just don't think it's gonna add anything for ingress and egress. And on top of that, the architect says as an architectural feature, he would prefer that to be a solid wall. And it, you know, it's still very open, though. It dips down to 45 inches and then works its way up where you're gonna have the large sheer components anyway. So I would, I'm not, I'm not doing this on purpose to play with your minds, but I really was... And as I do on all meetings, I do go in with an open mind, even though I may have some preconceptions as to where I'm gonna go. I listen to all the testimony. And I think that it would be better if we kept that solid wall along the east and give the extra 15 feet combined with the grand steps design. And you can, you know, you can see it. It is still a significant amount of green space. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's right, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
I have a question. So you want to be 15 or 30?
The extra 15, so it would be a total of 30.
Thank you. Mr. Karapetian, is that better pronunciation?
I'm used to it quite a lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everybody. This is a, this has been a long process. The museum committee, SWA, our staff, they've done a great job. Everybody's done a great job. This is not an easy, easy project to put together overall. I am okay with the grand steps, Central Park design with grand steps. And I tell you why. Not just because it has more green space and it's one piece, but it also, the stage and the park area will face the paseo next to Mona. And you can see from that stage all the way through to Americana. So that is a wide, long view, that open area that we are looking for. As far as the 15 feet versus 30 feet, this building was pushed back another 15 feet because of the technicality issues, because of, it had to go back. It's not that way. They chose to push it back from the Colorado side. So I'm okay with the 30 feet as well. The wall on the side, to be honest with you, I don't know how many people from ARC are gonna go all the way around and walk on a walkway, go around and try to access the plaza from the space between the ARC and the museum. It has a really wide, a 50-foot-wide entrance from Colorado and a huge wide entrance from the plaza area. I think most people were coming from the plaza area. And the steps, I'm looking at this design, it shows that the steps are within the envelope of the building, and it's not encroaching into the, into the park area. So I asked too many questions, and I got the answers. I think as far as the alternatives, I don't know how are we gonna do this as far as the alternatives go. But on the design one, I will approve the stage one with the recommendations that that area not to be opened up on the east side and the distance or the hardscape to be extended to 30 feet. What else? And the, yeah, on the park, park design, the grand steps, I think that's the most effective one. And it has a children's splash play area, which I like the most. It's a great feature in there. And everybody knows me and the water features, so I'm gonna stop here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll start with the, I have no problem with the lease. I think the lease is fine. I have no issue with that. I think it's a beautiful project. I've waited for this. The community is, I think, behind this so far. I want to start with the park plan because I do have, I agree with my fellow council members that number three would be my choice, except for the steps. I would like to see the steps minimized so that we don't take any more of the green space away. I think, again, the stage area, I would like to see a permanent concrete, maybe a demi, kind of a half-circle stage area there, permanent, so that we can have the sound system, et cetera, put in before it's too late. The active plaza, I'd like to see activities for seniors. I guess I'm on a senior kind of wave tonight. Because, you know, the ARC is right next door. Seniors work out there, they visit there, they have lunches there. On a beautiful day, I'm sure they'd like to go outside and have some activities, some real activities, like bocce ball or penequay, whatever that is, or horseshoes, or what, anything. Something that seniors can be active in outdoors. Let's see, the children's, there is no children's play park in this particular design, but I would like to see that in this design. You have the, you have, you have a children's garden, you have a forest park, you have the splash, but you don't have a play park like you have in one of the others. So I would imagine that that means equipment. Is that right? So I think that's probably what people would like to see somewhere in the park. And I like the café. And let's see, is there anything else? I think that takes care of all the arts and culture. And you know, if we had a stage there where you have it, you know, anteas could go in and do Shakespeare in the park. And that'd actually have a raised area where people could see them. And it's far enough away from the museum that it won't, you know, cost, it won't be a noise factor or anything like that, but still be inviting to everyone. So that's, those are my thoughts on the park. The wall side, you know, again, I think this is a beautiful design, but I really did like the scheme where the wall, where there was a passageway so that everything was connected. It seems like this is segregating, not integrating. And I just think that this park, this whole block is supposed to be a community-oriented place where everybody can get to everywhere. Here, if you're in a wheelchair, you have to go down the ramp, all around the wall, and then back. And if you want to go to the arc center, it just seems that we're not, we're not really thinking about those that might be, it would be easier for them to just go into this space on that east side and enjoy it instead of having to go around. So I would sure like to see the architect change that. And about the 30 feet in front of the museum, you know, we have had outreach meetings. We have talked to the community about park space, open space, green space. We're not taking it away. We're giving you more. And now I find out that we're, you know, if we, that we're taking away more green space. And, you know, it just seems like we're being counterintuitive. We're telling them one thing and then taking it back. And I just feel like that's not being transparent, that's not being honest. And as I say, I suggested the 20-foot, I would actually go for that, but I guess I'm, I'm not going to, that's not gonna happen. I understand the, you know, the plaza that you want to have there, but, you know, I just feel like we've worked so hard on this beautiful project in the perfect spot. I think it's the perfect spot for it. But I just want to see the community, the entire community, happy with this project because we're giving them enough green space. We're giving them the open space that they wanted. We're not taking it away, peeling it away, step by step by step. It gets smaller and smaller. I just hope that it ends here. I hope it ends here. That we're, don't, we don't, we are not asked again to give up more of this green space in the park. I want the project to go through, and I deeply regret the fact that I, I'm just having a problem with these two issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Yes, Mr. Arjenian.
I believe we were not presented with enough drawings, the sections and other drawings, which was very important to decide. This was, in my opinion, kind of incomplete drawings and information. But however, since already it's clear where we are going, so I wait for the roll call.
Mr. Arjenian, so in order for you to make the decision, what drawings are missing?
The levels are not really clear. The sheer wall, I have no problem with that. Whether it's will close or whatever, I have no problem with it. But the levels are not clear, so you cannot see where you're going at. So I can't explain to you. This is engineering. I have to show you what I'm talking about. But I'm telling to the architects and whoever provided the drawings, those information were missing. But however, I wait for the roll call.
You will, I'm sorry, however, what?
For the vote.
How about, are you okay with the proposed lease terms?
That's why I'm saying, I'll wait until you express yourself, and then I will vote when the time comes.
Okay.
Close to the desk.
Yeah, usually, you know, mayor speaks last, but that's fine. It's absolutely fine. Okay, so I want to thank everyone for their input in the, in this very important project. Staff has worked very hard and cooperated with the museum committee that has worked very hard on its own. And we've reached this point where some hard decisions are being made. So let's make them. The terms of the lease are fine. I agree with my colleagues. They're all sort of spelled out and all within the confines of leases in these types of arrangements. I want to address the issue of the location. I know Mr. Hoffman has spoken about this a couple of times. And he had a suggestion as to where it should go. You know, we've had this issue of the location sort of regurgitated on numerous occasions already. It started out at the, at the parking lot by Glendale College, by the Armenian Catholic Church and the neighborhood there. It wasn't, it wasn't the college that had a problem with it. College absolutely had no problem with it. In fact, college, by all indications, saw the museum as a contributor to sort of the educational atmosphere of the college. It was not a problem for the college. It was the neighborhood that had a problem with it. And there were, you know, some significant merits to their concern. They didn't want the additional traffic, you know, the typical concerns that neighborhoods have. And based on that, I think I was the first to recommend, well, why don't we go to, why don't we go to Central Park? And for that, I've been chastised by some, very few, very few, but some very choice individuals in the city of Glendale as to why did I direct this museum to this part of the city? And thankfully, of course, you know, any council member can offer or suggest anything. Without the support of their colleagues, nothing gets done. So this has been a joint, sort of collective, decision by council. And this location, for obvious reasons, it's downtown Glendale. It is the most popular part of the city. The park itself, of course, it's a park, it's a very important park, but it is the most passive park in all of Glendale. I think the green slopes of our mountains on the far north part of Glendale are probably more active than most of the time Central Park is. It's just true. It is. So it's not like all of a sudden this wonderful place that was inundated with, you know, our residents on a daily basis suddenly being taken away, and oh my God, what is happening? Why, why would these, why, why is this happening? That is just not the case. So there have been other suggestions that have brought for, that have been brought forward. One of them was, let's move it to the armory. How? I mean, who said that the armory is available? It's not. And I mean, just completely off-the-wall idea. I don't know who originated it. A terrible idea, didn't go anywhere. So now this idea, well, why don't they just basically go to South Glendale? You know, it's that Armenian part of the city where the Armenian churches, there were the Glendale Youth Centers, with a bunch of small Armenian restaurants. I think people who think that were missing the point. This museum is not for Armenians. It's not for Armenian-Americans. It's for everyone, mostly for everyone other than Armenians. It is an introduction from, if I understand this correctly, at least my vision of what it should be, is that it's an introduction of the Armenian heritage, of the Armenian culture to our non-Armenian neighbors and friends and, you know, everyone else that we share this wonderful country with. So sending it down into South Glendale, sort of, you know, pigeonholing it, hiding it behind some, I don't know, some community center or something, not the idea. And it's not gonna work, and I would never support that, never. You know, references have been made, well, why, you know, we have to do it in a way where the entire community supports it. Frankly, I haven't seen any evidence of the entire community not supporting it. I've seen some individuals be opposed to it. I've seen some very fringe individuals, you know, oppose it in a very, sort of blatantly racist way. That's obviously not gonna sway my opinion about it one way or another. In fact, it may actually sway it the other way. So now to the, there seems to be overall consensus about the museum. It's not really an issue for this council, but there are those, I think, those two sticking points, which is the opening of an entrance on the east side of the wall and the space between sort of the green... space between sort of the green part of the park and, and the museum, northern edge of the museum. So let's start with the entry to the, to, to the east, east of the museum from the ARC. I mean, as a concept, I, you know, I try, I, I'm open to it, I, I tried to get the architect's opinion about it, and it seems like the architect's very adamant that it's just not, not the right thing, it's, it's not gonna, it's going to change the architectural integrity of the building. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure the architect knows what he's talking about, but, but from a practical perspective, it's nice to have as many entrances to a museum as possible, like my colleague said. However, I'm wondering who from the, our Adult Recreation Center is going to go to the museum? I mean, how many times can our elderly who use the ARC go to the museum? And if, why would anyone other than people patronizing the ARC use the ARC as an entry to the museum? I, I don't, realistically speaking, I don't understand why, why would anyone go through there when they can go? I mean, sure, the, the folks who are there, it will be very convenient for them to just directly enter the museum, but again, that's like once or twice, and then? So just for the ARC to open an entry just so that the ARC folks can have access to it, doesn't make sense, just, there isn't, that's not a big enough a reason to completely alter the architecture. So I, I'm, I'm happy to sort of make a recommendation to the, to the architect to consider it, but that would be a recommendation only, that's all, not a condition. In terms of the space, I, I think my colleagues, Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Karpetyan stated it pretty eloquently, the, and I, I do understand that every, every museum space like that, it can't start at the wall, it can't start at the door, it has, there has to be some depth, there has to be, you have to kind of be able to absorb the whole thing visually before you physically enter it. Can't think of a museum that really is limited to its, its door, and fifteen feet is, as was demonstrated, it's not that much distance. Again, in terms of somehow taking more and more, I don't know where that's coming from, I honestly don't understand. If anyone had the impression that building a museum, having a museum means putting up four walls and everything inside the museum is the absolute limits, or the, the four walls are the absolute limits of the museum, I think they had a misconception about what a museum, a, a real museum is. I mean, it has to have some depth to it other than just what's in, inside. The green space, again, that we're adding at the expense of, you know, eliminating the parking lots is very significant, it's, you know, I think it's more of a question how that's used, so it's more of a question of programming it properly than it is a matter of, well, fifteen feet's going to make a difference one way or another. I like the third version that my colleagues liked best as well, and I'm ready to vote on this. If someone will propose a couple more comments.
Yeah, please, of course.
I think, again, about the opening up that wall, I think the assumption is that everyone is going to try to go from the, the plaza of the, the ARC into the museum. If you're inside the, the ARC building, all you have to do is walk outside, walk a few short steps, short, short steps, and you get to the museum from the north side. Also, if you are in a wheelchair and you want, you have that ramp going up, those ramps are not, won't be ADA accessible. There is a ramp right now to get you into the museum plaza area, but if you want to go from the ARC into the museum level, the plaza in the museum level, the, the ramp will not, will not, those walking ramps that was mentioned will not, will not comply with the ADA. And I don't know how many museums are out there, I've seen so many of them, that they have entrances from all three sides. I haven't seen that many of them that have that many entrances. So, and one other thing about open space, please, this is a, this is a, a great project for the entire community, and I think we have done enough community outreach, we listened to the community, their, their input is implemented into this, their suggestions are implemented into this design, all of the designs that SWA did as well, the staff knows about it. So by saying we're taking away open space, it's a wrong statement because we have, did a quick calculation, just the green area is about ninety-five thousand, ninety-three thousand square feet, not including the hard, hardscape, the walkways around the building. So I think we're, we're trying to keep the balance and, and do what's right, right for our community. Also, the stage, I don't know, are we making a decision on the stage or the location of the stage, or is it going to be a permanent concrete stage? Because that would be a divider between the east side and the west side of that third option, and I don't know if I, I like that stage at this time, at, over there or not. Maybe later we can have, I, I, do we, this is a question, are we making a, a decision on the every point of this design, or are we saying we like this concept and wrong for it, and we'll make the decision later on?
I have to defer to staff, I think generally they're, they're asking for one of the concept plans to be, you, if council gives direction on one of the concept plans, they'll go forward on it, and a little bit more specificity will be brought back to council. Is that fair enough?
It will be brought back to, to, to vote on.
We'll bring it back with the final design.
Okay, got it.
And, and to the extent we can, we'll give you some options, permanent stage versus infrastructure in place so we can move that stage.
This, this, the ARC since it was raised, I wish, John, I'm sorry, Onik Bulanikyan or Maggie Kavarian were here. Do we have information of how many, what the, what the turnover is at the ARC? I mean, how many new individuals use it?
That's a very good question, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a specific answer to that.
I can't, I, I have to believe it's a finite number of people, it's not, you know, there's, there isn't that much turnover there.
Yeah, the, the concept behind the ARC and, and not to belabor the point, was that it would be more of a connectivity. If, if something was happening at the museum, that could also be utilized at the ARC and vice versa. That's just one piece of it, but the other piece of it was just the connectivity from south to north and north to south, and then have that connectivity going into the east side. So ARC is a piece of that.
And I think another thing that we're forgetting is the fact that that walkway is where the Sister City statues are going to be. So there are people, public, resident, not necessarily ARC members, they're going to, the public is going to be walking to see the structure, the statues, the Comfort Woman statue. There probably will be an Armenian statue there for, you know, as a remembrance. So people are going to be using that as a walkway to see tho, to see that art.
So I'm sorry, where, where is, where are the statues going to be?
Right across from the wall. That's the, that's the walkway. It's the Sister City Walkway, correct? Am I correct?
That's correct, we, we call it the.
Sister City, I'm looking.
We've called it two names, the north-south walkway, but also it's the Sister Cities Garden Walk.
Sculpture Walk.
Right.
Sculpture Walk. So if people are walking along Colorado and they see, they look up and they see statues, they might want to walk up there and take a look at what this is, and then there they have the opening to the museum, does anyone lis, they have the opening to the museum and they walk in. I mean, it's, it just makes sense.
Right, right, it's a destination all to itself.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
However, some might say that an entrance to a museum may detract from the features of a Sister City Walk. In, in any event, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, because I think we're going to have some negative votes, I'll give my council colleagues a chance maybe to express a negative vote on one or more of these. So let's start with eight D one. This is a Central Park master plan reflecting the grand steps, the grand steps design, leaving the details such as the stage and all that other stuff open for another, for another date. So I'll move eight D one.
Excuse me, before.
Yes, the grand steps.
I'm going to vote, that's why.
I know, but you guys started expressing yourselves, I just want to say, all I was saying, I had problem with, I thought these drawings are not enough. I was expecting more, however, since I didn't raise the question before, so I go along with this. This is a nice project, I have no question about it. The details of what we're going to present was not clear to me. However, I'm willing to vote on it and.
Very nice, okay, so we have.
Eight D one implementing the grand steps design.
Second. Can we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Alajianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Harrisonian?
Yes.
I'll move eight D two reflecting the fifteen-foot additional hardscape in the front and the, the solid wall, I don't want to call it solid, but the continuous wall on the east side as reflected by the presentation of Mr. Alajian.
As reflected in the applicant's submittal.
In the submittal.
So that's the total of thirty feet, the total of thirty feet.
Total of thirty.
May we have a second? May we have the roll call, please?
Second was by Councilmember Karpetian.
Councilmember Alajianian.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmembers Alajianian?
Yes.
Devine?
For the reasons I stated, no.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Harrisonian?
Yes.
Business terms.
How about terms of the lease?
I'll move D three reflecting the business terms of agreement between the city of Glendale and the Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center Committee.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Alajianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Ajarian?
Yes.
Harrisonian?
Yes.
Thank you, that completes this item.
This is when you clap.
Thank you for that, we, you can, you can leave if you want, or you can wait for a few more minutes.
Mayor and council, as was mentioned by the city manager, item nine-eight, which was a public hearing, was removed, was pulled. That leaves only oral communications on this agenda, along with any new business that you may have.
Yes, let's, let's wait just one minute till our friends empty the chambers. We even had some photos taken, so we have one speaker, and that's Chinocon Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, last time she waited until 3:15 AM. I am, I'm, I am sure she's here.
And as Ms. Ramirez.
She's downstairs, we're going to wait. We're going to wait.
We believe Ms. Ramirez is coming up, is, is she?
Yes, she is.
Is Chino, is Ms. Ramirez coming? All right, as she's making her way up, I'll just say that discussion is limited to, item is not part of the agenda, your speaker is allowed five minutes.
Yes, it is.
You bet.
Councilmate, question or response to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. Same manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation report if she so chooses.
Can we have Ms. Ramirez, when she comes up to speak, can we have her leave her stuff downstairs? Is it safe or no? It's a li, it's a liability issue, okay, all right. Bye-bye. Trying to be helpful.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, that was an excellent presentation. I can't believe it, it was actually very lovely. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, and lovely, thank you. And excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, the city of Glendale have these elegant, classy, well-mannered young students to serve as host and hostesses, to guide Glendale constituents, fill out the speaker forms, and they take the speaker's card up to the city clerk. Such political and social class, they embrace these charming and intelligent youth of the future. Bravo Glendale, bravo. And next important public comment is we are demanding that the INS, DMV, DEA, ATF, and ICE take action against the following license plate vehicles that belong to gang-banging felons. We are here to ensure public safety for all residents and communities in America. Let us expose these criminal rings that torture legal, law-abiding citizens, and they are the following license plate numbers. Seven, D as in David, V as in victory, D as in Delta, four-two-eight. Next, four, Z as in zebra, G as in go, J as in Japan, three-nine-zero. Next, seven, F as in Frank, S as in Sam, G as in go, eight-four-zero. Next, six, L as in love, N as in Nancy, F as in Frank, three-six-two. Next, five, F as in Frank, N as in Nancy, D as in David, nine-one-one. Next, five, D as in David, J as in Japan, L as in love, zero-one-one. Next, seven, E as in egg, K as in king, E as in Esther, eight-seven-nine. Next, eight, B as in boy, K as in king, G as in go, six-eight-nine. Next, six, R as in Robert, X as in extra, J as in Japan, zero-nine-zero. Next, seven, D as in David, O as in orange, F as in Frank, eight-zero-five. Next, six, S as in Sam, W as in water, E as in egg, seven-one-seven. Next, seven, L as in love, I as in ice, C as in, uh, Cobra, five-four-three. Next, six, K as in king, F as in Frank, Z as in zebra, nine-six-nine. Thank you. On another disturbing matter, ladies and gentlemen, many people became homeless for the following reasons. Drugs, number one, drugs, alcohol, and other addictive narcotics such as crack, meth, and heroin. Number two, horrid criminal record or three strikes. Number three, breadwinner of the family dies suddenly and coupled with deep paralyzing grief. Four, evictions on your record. And five, victims of crime, i.e. gang stalking. And six, unethical attorneys, attorneys who have no integrity, morals, values, or human dignity, and nor any self-respect. In my case, it was both, being a victim of crime and retaining an unethical attorney that left me ultimately homeless. Through his negligent carelessness, I resolved nothing on my own, nor with him, because of, of, because it was the beginning stages of the horrendous gang stalkings and which I knew nothing about, and greatly baffled, angry, and rattled. My whole existence was disastrously uprooted. Well, I retained this attorney about three to four years ago as a landlord-tenant attorney to help me cure a hostile environment at my apartment building in LA, but I left my apartment legal problems to my attorney named Ramin Joseph Khorrendian. He is, again, Ramin Joseph Khorrendian, whom I met in two separate times, one for a paid consultation, and if, and if he would accept my case, I would have to pay a couple of thousand dollars to start my case, which I did. He retained me, and I thought that he would do a reasonable job. As it turns out, someone paid him to not do my case. I owe him not a penny, and he never, ever, ever sent a demand letter. Am I going after him now? Absolutely, even after all these years. I detrimentally relied on him, and I trusted him, but he turned out to be nothing more than another scumbag who had no integrity, no ethics, no principles, no morals, and no values. So here again, this year, we're going to expose all the dirty, rotten attorneys that have put many people on the streets. And again, being a little slow to react, this is my fault too, but now this year, I'm going after him, I'm going to nail him politically and legally and morally. But again, God bless America, God bless our President Donald Trump, and God bless all of you for doing a great job. Brilliant questions, by the way, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Do we have new business?
Mr. Mayor, I move that pursuant to Article eight, Section one of the city charter and government code, Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-one-A-five, the council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Yvette Nukian as senior assistant city attorney, and further, that a written copy of this motion shall be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the office of the Civil Service Commission of the city of Glendale as the written statement required by Article twenty-four, Section five-
He retained me, um, and I thought that he would do a reasonable job. As it turns out, someone paid him to not do my case. I owe him not a penny, and he never, ever, ever sent the demand letter. Am I going after him now? Absolutely, even after all these years. Um, I detrimentally relied on him, and I trusted him, but he turned out to be nothing more than another scumbag who had no integrity, no ethics, no principles, no morals, and no values. So, here again, this year, we're going to expose all the dirty, rotten attorneys that have put many people on the streets. And again, being a little slow to react, this is my fault too, but now, this year, I'm going after him, I'm going to nail him politically and legally and morally. But again, God bless America, God bless our President Donald Trump, and God bless all of you for doing a great job. Brilliant questions, by the way, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Do we have new business?
We do. Mr. Mayor, I move that pursuant to Article eight, Section one of the city charter and Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-one-A-five, the council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Yvette Nukian as senior assistant city attorney, and further, that a written copy of this motion shall be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale as the written statement required by Article twenty-four, Section five, subsection two of the charter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Alajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn in memory of, uh, late Barbara Bush.
Second. And we are adjourned.